All right. Good evening and welcome to the Hanson Select Board meeting of March 19th, 2024. This meeting is being recorded by Whitman Hanson Community Access Television. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to God, come in the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in whose whole liberty and justice are all.
Okay. Mrs. Ray, you know the drill.
I do, and I can't wait for elections to be over. We are looking for citizens at large to become members of the following committees: Bylaw Committee, Cable and Internet Committee, Community Preservation Committee, Capital Improvement Committee, Cultural Council, Economic Development Committee, Energy Committee, Historical Commission, MaKwan Reuse Committee, Memorial Day and Patriotic Observance Committee, Recreation Commission, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. Volunteer applications may be found on the town website, www.hanson-ma.gov, or by calling the Select Board's office at 781-293-2131. Nomination papers for the May 18th, 2024 Town election are now available at the Town Clerk's Office for the following offices: Two Select Board for three-year terms, Board of Health for a three-year term, Cemetery Commissioner for a three-year term, Hanson Housing Authority for a five-year term, Two Trustees of Public Library for three-year terms, Assessor for a three-year term, Board of Health for a one-year term, Planning Board for a five-year term, Two Constables for three-year terms, Two Water Commissioners for three-year terms, and the Whitman Hanson Regional School District Committee pre-K through 12 for a three-year term. Each candidate prior to obtaining blank nomination papers shall sign a statement containing his/her name and address and the town office, which he/she intends to be a candidate. The last day to obtain nomination papers is Monday, March 25th, 2024, and nomination papers must be returned to the Town Clerk's Office by 5:00 PM Friday, March 29th, 2024. A minimum of 50 certified signatures of registered voters is necessary in order for a candidate's name to be placed on the ballot. Upcoming meetings: Select Board, April 2nd, 2024; Select Board, April 9th, 2024.
All right. Thank you very much. So we will kick it off with new business. Vote to reappoint Mary Mercier as Board of Register for a three-year term ending March 31st, 2027. I will entertain a motion to appoint Mary Mercier Board of Register.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, great. Hey, that brings us to High Street Park Committee Discussion.
All right. I wanted to bring the High Street Park to the Select Board because we've had a couple of meetings in which we could not get a quorum, which kind of pushed everything off, so that's what brings us here today. It's really nothing too controversial. I'm here to report good news, and we're looking for the support of the Select Board. We have taken a vote at yesterday's meeting to approve the plan as a committee and give it to our town planner to get it approved by the Planning Board to move forward with the project and finalizing the plan. So we're very happy about that. We're asking that the Select Board, once again, symbolically take a vote of support in our decision to move forward with giving the plan to the Planning Board for approval.
So what is the plan?
The plan is the drawing that we had shown. Nothing's changed to it since last year.
Can you just refresh? We've covered a lot of miles since then. Can you just give us the high points?
It's the same plan. I mean, Phil can talk to it a little bit more, but it's the same plan that we've had basically in existence for, I think, the past six years since it was up layout. We're going to try and do this in phases, but really, the left side by the water tower is going to remain the park. We are going to have roadways, parking, a dog park in the back. All this stuff is preliminary, though. I don't necessarily want to get too much into the projects on the plan because a lot of stuff can still change. It's really just outlining that the plan can go to the Planning Board for the appropriate zoning and waivers and whatever else it needs to be able to move forward. So we did take, before I pass it off to Phil, who knows a lot more about it than I, we did also take a vote, and the reason why I wanted to also bring this to the Select Board is there's issues around the community garden and things like that. There are no plans to change any of that. That's built into the plans and the exact existing layout. No changes to any of those things. I want to reassure folks that, again, just because the plan is approved and we're going to be moving it to the Planning Board, it doesn't mean that all of these public hearings and all of these input info sessions that we've been doing is negated in any way. We're still compiling lists of Butters' concerns and other adjustments that need to get made. It doesn't mean that we can't still make these changes. We just want to send it to the Planning Board for approval. Tony also wants to put the plan in our progress on the website formally, so once that's up and running, everybody will be able to have access to all of these plans in a more readily available way. So with that, I'll pass it off to Phil.
As supportive of Joe said, the plan physically has been before. It simply is laying out the essentials, the infrastructure part for parking, tax, driving, access, et cetera. It also has been, a lot of that viewed as having given approval by the fire team and police team, that is just a matter of current scenes of general information. And what we said, it remains a concept, not a plan from a few of the construction, but it lays out the principles of different elements that should be there, the proper relationship in general stays. But a lot of the lack that I know is the access, where the road conduces, models, drivers, things that are, in many cases, somewhat what they already are, have been for a long time. But we need to create a basis or a foundation for serious progress forward. It would be ample opportunity to make improvements, finalize details, et cetera, and potentially engage professional assistance in designing elements and layouts that would actually be very achievable and doable, be careful, in basis. But we need to firm up a foundation for all these future plans, and the plan is what does seem to be appropriate to us. So we wouldn't go here without your knowledge and consent.
Okay. I mean, I do appreciate that, and I think I do conceptually know what you guys are doing, but I just feel a little weird approving a plan that we don't have in front of us to go to the Planning Board. Like, I know we saw it, but it's been so long that I really don't even remember it in any amount of detail. I mean, and I know you had walks and you got feedback from the Butters, and I know people were super nervous about how that might change, you know, kind of their world, if you will, you know? Which, of course, it will, because right now, there's really nothing there, and there might be something there after all's said and done. And I know the thought process was to try to mitigate that as much as possible, obviously with design. You know, we're not going to intentionally try to, you know, change somebody's interaction with that property, but if you are a Butter, we might need to. If, for instance, parking was the big thing that I think people were concerned, like, it would be really close to their backyard, and, you know, like, what would that mean if there were events and stuff like that? So I mean, I don't, what do you guys think? Do you feel okay just sending it to the Planning Board? If I'm the only one who, you know, I'm...
Well, we have to listen to what the Butters are saying. I mean, that's not a...
So for the Planning Board, is the Planning Board basically going to just kind of tell you, like, conceptually, pitfalls for the unwary type of thing? Or are they going to have hearings on it? I'm just trying to figure out what...
It makes it more formal, because the town planner can now actually do something with that plan and actually make adjustments that all these people need and want to hear. Oh, good, yeah.
Wonderful. So can we, like, print it?
You can, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, whatever helps with the conversation. Because I do want to remind everybody that we did already approve this plan as a Select Board.
Yes, we did.
We already went through all this process. The previous Select Boards have also approved this plan. Nothing has changed over the years. It literally just allows us to take the concept and be able to actually make adjustments now, rather than making it this...
So it allows the town planner to make adjustments?
Yeah. It also allows us to actually make progress towards grant writing and all that. We can't do any of those things because everything's still in... I use the term loosely, because I don't want to confuse it with what Phil was saying, but it still, it takes it from concept to conceptualization. It's, as of right now, it's an idea. We're trying to turn it into something that's more tangible, so we can actually do something with it. And I think the townspeople deserve progress on this after so long.
And you do need grant money, and Tony does need to be involved. Mr. DeFray is the town planner. I don't want to mean to be so casual and refer to him as Tony. Does need to be involved if he's going to be, you know, like, applying for grant money. And, okay, I feel, yeah.
A way I would put it is that what we're doing, if you take your plan and put it on the table, rather than having it in the air, and on the table, where you can potentially have hearings, you can pull it off and make changes, bring it back, it's a basis for making solid, moving from concept to its, hopefully to its actual progress.
So it's a starting point?
Correct.
This actually is the starting point now, to your point.
Thank you.
It takes it, because we've been talking about the conceptualization of this for so long. This actually creates a starting point to say, this is not to say, and the reason why I want to make sure that, as a Select Board, we talked about this in public meetings, is because I want to dispel any type of issue in which, like, next week, even next year, we're breaking ground and just putting, we're not doing any of those things. Doing this plan does none of those things. It just gives us a starting point.
Okay.
There's still lots of public hearings, lots of conversations have to happen.
And there's the farmer's market area, which is very near and dear to Mrs. Ray's heart.
Yeah.
And so how will we, how will you guys, and maybe this is to be determined, and I'm totally fine if that's the answer, but how will the priorities, you know, how will you decide, like, whether the playground is more important than the Veterans Memorial or the event area and pavilion? Is that something, is it really just going to depend on, like, grant opportunities? Are you going to come up with a preliminary list of what you hope the priorities will be, but kind of have to roll with the punches to see where the money comes in?
So we had a fantastic meeting last night with some architectural designers, landscape designers, that gave us some good input. It's hard for us to make any decisions on anything at this point until that plan is approved, so we know actually what we're working with. Because the Planning Board could come in and look at this and say, well, this is a great plan, but you have to move this, or you need...
You need a setback, blah, blah, blah.
Right. We have no idea what we're actually working with right now. So this really is a very well-put-together doodle on a napkin until somebody takes it and then, you know, tells us what the actual definitions are.
Okay, cool. Did anybody have any questions for Mr. Clemmons or Mr. Weeks?
Pretty good. One of the things that will help us going forward is with, again, the right kind of input and solid information, we'll know more about costs as well as matching up with resources. That might help us with our priorities as well as desires.
Yeah, I imagine, even though we might have the best of intentions in setting priorities, the money may lead us in terms of what the priorities are, wherever that comes.
Also, town meeting will as well, because we can't spend money without people allowing us to, and that is where we're going to be asking people for money. So that's going to set our priorities as well. We have so much talking to do now, but this gives us light at the end of the tunnel.
Can I kind of say one thing, though? I kind of, if I was going to point at something that we would start with, I think we should start with the playground.
I agree.
I really do. That's where, that's going to draw people in, and then from there, we can go out. But I think the playground is where we're going to be most bang.
What if our members have been championing the playground for about seven years?
Okay.
And it's pretty hard to be for her children now, she thinks it might be...
Her grandchildren, yeah.
But you see that as being an attraction to the town, open 24/7, dawn to dusk, weather permitting, once it exists.
Yep. Okay. Yes, Ms. Green.
Madam Chair, if I may, please don't forget that we have that earmark for the Linnis County Hospital site that this would include. All I need is a scope of work and a budget. It's about $56,000, and I can submit it, and we can get that process going. So just a little reminder on that.
All right. So I will entertain a motion to approve the High Street Park Committee moving this plan onto the Planning Board.
So moved.
Seven.
Any further discussion? All right. All in favor? All right. Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the support. This is a long time coming, and we had a really good, you know, but brief celebration around this, because this is many, many years in the making, and this is a huge step. So we really appreciate everyone supporting it.
That's awesome. Thank you very much.
Any questions about the access control? You know, we're going to be looking with the fire team at potential improvements next couple days.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clemmons. And that brings us to Ms. Green. Relocation of Veterans Officer Office.
Yes. Madam Chair, Vice Chair Members of the Board, in talking with our Veterans Agent and speaking with our Council on Aging Director, the Council on Aging building would be a much better location for our Veterans Agent. Here in Town Hall, he shares an office with the registrars, so it's hard for him to have people come in and, you know, meet with him, because he has to kind of adhere to their schedules, things like that. So moving him over to the Senior Center is a much better fit in this particular area, because he and Mary Collins often need to contact each other, because sometimes the services overlap. And over at the Senior Center, any veteran that walks in that building will be greeted appropriately. They will show them to Joe. If Joe is not in the office, they will take a phone number and a name and provide a message. So it's a very, very good move.
Where are they going to put him?
So right now, they're building that new office space. He will be going into that office space when they're not using it for meetings, which is not going to be a regular event. So he'll sit mainly in there, and if he has to move, maybe to where the hairdresser is, because she's only in there a couple days a week, or there is a historic room in the library that he could also utilize. So that's a very good location for him. So we are going to begin that transition as soon as that little office space is more complete. So we're going to try and push that through for a couple of weeks to get him over there.
I think that will be a better environment for him and for the folks coming to talk to him all the way around. And there's a lot of synergies between what he's doing and what Mary Collins is doing. So...
And they might find it a very welcoming area, welcoming place, because there are veterans who do find a welcome home at the Senior Center, and they sit and they chat. So it may be more welcoming to other veterans who might be intimidated and come to Town Hall. But if they go there and they see the atmosphere, it will probably open them up to a whole new world, and I think it's a very good move.
Well, I thought it was a lovely idea, and kudos to you, Ms. Green. Did anybody have any questions? Okay. Good work on that. And then that brings us to approve request for Cranberry Council of Churches to use Cranberry Cove on March 31st, 2024, sunrise service beginning at 6:30 AM. I will entertain that motion.
So moved.
Seven.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All right. And then that brings us...
Is that okay? I'm so sorry. May I just have a motion to relocate the Veterans Officer to the Council on Aging?
Oh, certainly. I will entertain a motion to relocate Joe Gombachus, our Veterans Officer's office, to the Senior Center.
So moved.
Seven.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Great. Thank you, Ms. Green, for keeping us on track. Old business. Discussion regarding possible school override. I had an opportunity to speak to the Chair of the Whitman Select Board and the Chair of the School Committee yesterday, just to kind of check in, because we had had that conversation about maybe having a three-party conversation. I believe Ms. Green forwarded everybody the information that tomorrow night will be when the School Committee is setting the assessment. So I think it's a bit premature for us to zig or zig, since we don't know what the, you know, what the assessment's going to be set at, but we certainly need to be ready and be agile, depending upon what that amount is set. And, you know, and I did just sort of tell both, you know, Chairman Stafford and Chairman Kowalski where we were at, that we, what we had discussed in open session, that, you know, to the extent that that assessment didn't come down to a point that we had felt comfortable with, that we might entertain an override, but if we did, it would probably be a school override, that we had not officially really voted on that yet, because it wasn't a need to. And that, combined with Mr. Madden's presentation to us last week, indicating that next year we would need an operational override, it seemed ill-timed for us to try to do an operational override this year with such short notice, such a short runway, as they say. Because we really need to educate people on what that money would be used for, for an operational override. And even if we are going to do an operational override next year, if the Board decides that's what we want to do, we've got a lot of education to do about what that means, how it would work, whether we would do the $5 million upfront, whether we would break it up into, you know, annual, you know, overrides, what the average tax bill, how the average tax bill would be impacted, and lots of, lots of, lots of questions. And I think we would need to do some educational forums, where people could come and ask questions, where people could come and voice concerns. I don't, I would really hate to have town meeting be the only place that people could come to talk and voice concerns or ask questions, or, you know, just have us thinking about some of, you know, people's concerns and questions in advance. So I, as I said, the runway's too short for us to do an operational override this year. That's my opinion. I know we haven't taken a vote. I don't know what, I think we kind of had already discussed it generally.
I completely agree.
Okay. All right. I mean, did anybody want to...
How are we going to be able to afford it this year? Are we going to be able to get to, are you talking about doing it next May or this October?
Probably May. And in terms of this year, Ms. Green, did you want to kind of, and Mr. Ken Sheriff, kind of talk about what preparatory work we've been doing? And, you know, we're not going to, you know, like, absolutely wait until tomorrow night and then start clutching our pearls, trying to figure out what to do. We've been, you know, sort of thinking through different scenarios. None of them are particularly bright spots, but we are working through it. So, Ms. Green, I didn't know if you wanted to kind of...
So I did, I did watch the School Committee meeting from last Wednesday, and Superintendent Simonak did propose a number of scenarios with some different cuts. So basically, you all have a copy. I did ask our town accountant to plug in the percentages that he was referencing to, based on each level of cuts. So you do have a little, a sheet that will show you, based on the different percentages that he had stated on, what the assessment would be, the increase of, you know, the increase from prior fiscal year assessment, change of percent, and then what our budget shortfall is with these assessment figures. Now, we don't know what direction the School Committee is going to go into, but this will give an idea of where we will be, should any of these assessments be voted in, which still brings us to a budget shortfall. However, Mr. Kinshif and myself sit every week when he comes in, and we go through the budget and look for areas where monies can be released, possibly from our past articles. We also talk about the different departments. And this is unfortunate, but it's a reality. We have a, we have an employee in our building department who's out suddenly, and it could be a few weeks, which means the building department's going to be operating on a reduced schedule, because there's only one employee in that building department. So this will give folks a vision, a view of what Town Hall could become if we were have, if we were having to go in a direction of cutting staff. So it's just, it's just a view, but this is what we may face if we have to cut staff. And I'll hand it over to Mr. Kinshif.
So basically, where we stand right now, if the school, we anticipate the schools at a 5% increase. If we have a 5% increase with the schools, the town of Hanson will have to use free cash to fund the budget. There's no doubt about it, unless you want to cut the operational budget. So, you know, you'd have to use, like, a lot of one-time sources of revenue to get through this year. So that includes, like, the 5% at the schools, which we're budgeting, and we could balance the budget this year. So I guess the choice is, like, policy-wise for the Board, would you want to use free cash, or would you want to implement budget cuts this year? Because those are the alternatives. We're either going to use free cash to balance the budget this year, which would get us through one year as another B and A, or do the budget cuts this year. So once we know that, then we could probably move forward. Now, if the schools are in excess of that 5%, that leaves additional problem where we may just have to have a school override for that amount over and above the 5%. So that's kind of borderline where we stand. If you want to use free cash, it would probably be a lot easier. You know, it's basically hold your nose. We know it's not the best thing to do, get us through another year. But if you want to, next year, if the override doesn't pass, then there's no doubt about it, just get the layoffs ready, unemployment, and so forth. But I think you can get away with it this year by using one-time sources of revenue. If you don't want to do that, you want to have an altruistic view, no, but I want to structurally...
If it's at 5%.
If it's at 5%, right.
And then if it's at the 6.69...
We're getting, yeah, it's...
Then we've got to cut.
Yeah.
And there's just no, there's no wiggle run.
Right. There's, yeah.
How much free cash do we have?
Right now, we have, like, 1.4 million.
So wipe out the whole thing?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
And how many, I mean, I'm just looking at the town meeting here, just yapping it off the top of your head, roughly how much we have in expenditures in the town meeting?
Oh, for free cash?
Yeah.
I'm glad you asked that question.
Thank you very much.
So based upon the, so based upon the warrant articles that we currently have, we have $396,000 that is targeted to be used from free cash. So I think we could still balance the budget with the $1 million that's left over from free cash and still fund all these free cash articles. But that would leave us with...
It would leave us nothing.
Right.
And have we, I'm sure you have, but are there any grants, reimbursable grants, and are any allocated money that has not been spent, or any of that type of...
Well, what we could do is, like, because if we're using free cash for the operating budget, that begs the question, when if we need capital money? And there are pockets of money that we can use for capital expenditures this year. There's an account called Cielo Real Estate on the books for $265,000, and any project that can be borrowed for, you could use that. Lees has identified some unused articles that projects are over. We could reappropriate, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars in articles to use capital projects. So that, for the capital piece, yes, there's no grants for operating budget.
No, no, really, just for the, because I, because we keep getting into this place where we're not investing in our buildings, and then we wonder why they're in a state of disrepair.
I think it's an opportunity to use some pockets of money to do some investments in the building, even though we're using a lot of the free cash for the operating budget. But there's, there's still ways to, you know, do some investments. At least this year, we're using some pockets of money, you know, like, it's probably pulled together like a half a million bucks from old articles, funds and stuff to...
But assuming that we use $1 million out of the operating, I mean, out of free cash, we're already putting ourselves $1 million...
Oh, absolutely. If everything stays the exact same, we're $1 million.
Yeah, we're at least $2 million.
And people say, well, if we cut the budgets last year, now we have to cut, like, twice as many...
Well, right. And then, let's just say we go the route of cutting staff, right?
Yeah.
We're cutting to get down to $1 million savings, roughly.
Right.
So how many more are we going to cut next year if we're going to continue down this path? Because if we're taking the path of just cutting and cutting and cutting, at a certain point, you have nothing left to cut, and you have a whole bunch of empty buildings that are falling apart, because you have no staff and you have nobody in them. So we have a pretty, I guess, from my perspective, and I'm just, I really am just speaking rhetorically, because I know everybody here is working hard. It's just, I remember when we went through this last year, the very next day after town meeting, I remember saying, like, when are we going to start attacking the budget? We have to start on day one to figure out what it's going to look like. And I feel like we're just in this hamster wheel of the same conversation every single year.
Well, no, just a second, Mr. Kinshif. I would say, at that point, we had just engaged John Madden, and we knew that we did not have the data. We had simply had no data to make any decisions last year. And so what we said was that we were going to have John Madden come and give us, now we've got that. So now, if we don't act, it's on us.
Yeah, we knew we were going to be $1 million in the whole...
Yeah.
So we don't need John Madden to tell us that. We knew this. So, but yeah. So I'm just, for this, it's, you know, come May, again, we're going to be in the same, the same type of... be in the same, the same type of boat. So, even if we solve the problem today, just like last year, like, what are we going to do for the future? Like, that's, that's the biggest thing. So, um...
And that's why, like, people live week to week on a paycheck.
Yeah.
If you're going to use a metaphor, that's basically make a decision. You live in our week to week paycheck, you know?
Yeah.
That's basically...
I, I mean, obviously, I'm hoping that the schools settle at the 5. If they do the 6.69, I mean, what, what are we, you know, what would we be looking, we're looking at cutting, or what are you saying? Town hall staff, are we saying? Okay. And have you discussed this with the department heads?
Not yet.
Okay.
Not yet. I, I want to know, have more, more information to provide before we go that direction.
Yes.
Are there, are there these pockets of money that can be pulled together and looked at before we start layoffs and everything else?
These pockets of money can't be used to, for the operating budget, like, to fund salaries, to fund our budget. They only can be used for, for basically capital projects. Like, that one, for one instance, I'm looking at like $265,000 CLO lots account, that can only be used for capital projects.
On buildings.
On the, yeah. Or any project that you could borrow for, technically, any project authorized by chapter 44, section 7 and 8 of the Mass General Laws, you can...
So, there's restrictions around it. It's not, yeah, it's not like free, you know?
So, really, our options are cut, cut the operating budget, which includes, which is the 90% of any budget is staffing. So, cut, cut people, spend free cash, assuming that it comes in at a number that we can actually use free cash, or some type of override, whether it be a school override, operational override.
That's right. In the free cash, you don't have to wait. This free cash is certified from last year that's left over. So, I think you have the free cash to do it.
Yeah.
But just go in with your eyes wide open.
Yeah, you're paying the mortgage with the last of your savings account.
Yeah, you're paying with your credit card.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, I mean, I understand, I, I don't want to use all of our free cash, but I also just, I just don't think we have enough time to do an override, an educated, to do an override that's meaningful with the data that people need to make an informed decision. I just don't think, you know, trotting that out at, you know, in the middle of March for, you know, May town meeting, I, I don't think that that's the right thing to do.
And luckily, you have the free cash, like, sometimes we would have that to use because you wouldn't have been able by the time, we're having the same discussion this time next year, for a month, it doesn't, you, it's inevitable, you are going to have to, you can't...
I'm only agreeing to this if, if we all agree that we know we need an operational override next year. I, because we can only pull so many genies out of, you know, I was going to use the wrong analogy, I was going to say genie out of a hat, but genie, we can only pull so many rabbits out of a hat. And, you know, but again, it's a bit premature. We don't know what the school committee is going to say. I just wanted us to wrap our minds around, so when we're meeting on April 2nd, that we, you know, and we know what the time constraints are. If we do decide we're going to do any kind of an override, we know what Ms. McDowell said her timeframe is, and what Ms. Sloan said her timeframe from the town clerk's perspective is. And so, we'd need to let everybody know by, I think it was the 13th of April, somewhere in that vicinity. So, that would give us the 2nd and the 9th of April to decide whether or not we were going to do any kind of an override. And as I said, I, I personally don't think that if we're, if we're going to do an operational override, I think we need to have more data to, to support the fact that it's operational and not just for the schools.
What more data do you think you need?
I, I would want to know that, that we have not lived within the 5%, that we have been spending money that, you know, that we did not agree that we should be spending, and I do not see that.
And do you think the schools would give that to us? Is that who you're asking for the data from?
No, no, no. The schools, the schools, they're clearly asking for more than 5%. There's no, there's no gilding that lily.
Yeah.
So, I...
I guess I asked like what, what, because people are going to watch this anyway.
It was sort of a rhetorical question, like I'm saying, you know, we need it, but I don't, we don't have that because it doesn't exist because we're living within, within the budget that we all set for ourselves and for the school. The town is living within that budget.
Right.
So, to me, it's a school override. I just, and I know others disagree, and people have told me, well, a school override has a very, you know, very small chance of, of passing, which then is going to, you know, then it's going to be this domino effect because the school will have a budget that, an assessment that they've set. We will say, if, I'm just waving like a magic wand as though this is going to happen. And let's say that we said we were going to have the school override for this year. If that doesn't pass, and they've set the assessment, then it just puts this whole ball into motion that is just not going to end well. So, personally, I, I don't see how we don't have an operational override next year, what that amount is, and whether we break it out into five years, or whether it's the large dollar amount that, you know, Mr. Madden talked about at our last meeting. We can cross that bridge, but I, I, we just can't keep, you know, using free cash. We can't keep doing it. We're not going to have it next year to use anyway, so...
Right.
Yeah.
Madam Sheriff, thank you.
I'm sorry, I meant to acknowledge you, but I'm just looking, staring at you, thinking that you knew that I was acknowledging you.
We keep going back to the 5%. I don't think we, as a select board, ever voted on 5%. I think the number we voted on was 3.8 or 3.9. And I think basically, we're never going to go less than 5%. I, I understand that, unfortunately. And I think, but I think if we went to 3.8 or 3.9, it would be 150,000, about 150,000 less. So, this would be a lower number, but I know the school committee is never going to be able to agree to that. But I, we keep saying 5%, even though we've never voted on it. So, are we going to vote on it?
Ms. Green, where did the 5% come from?
I, I, basically, with John Madden in this report for Whitman, he put 5% in his projections. So, I know we have a Whitman Select Board number, but that's basically where we got it because we figured Whitman and Hanser and Sync would be more realistic. So, that's kind of where we, where we got it, the 5%.
Yeah, just kind of pull the number.
As a swag.
Do you guys want to say a lower number?
I, I don't think we can, but I think we, we need to vote on 5, or do something on 5 if we're going to go with 5, because we never, we never agreed to 5 as a select board. We voted for a much lower number.
Well, we're not, I mean, in all honesty, we haven't voted on anything having to do with the, with this. We've just been sort of hypothetically talking about numbers. We haven't really voted on anything. Do you want to vote this evening to say that we don't want to exceed 5%? I don't, not sure what that would really achieve because really, we still have to hear back from the school committee on what their assessment is. But if philosophically, that's, people want to feel as though there's a united front and that we're on the same page, I'm totally fine with that. I, I will defer to you guys. How do you want to handle that?
Personally, I don't have a number in mind. Personally, it's just a matter of what they can justify the spending of. I'm, I only need two points of data to make a decision from my perspective, and that is what the schools tell us that they need, that we feel comfortable with being able to provide, like, that, just by default, like, you want to be as, you want to stretch the dollar as, as far as humanly possible while still providing a high level of services. So, whatever they need, I'd like to see how they justify that. And the other piece of data is the finance committee and what they tell us they think. Because when you were talking earlier about needing the data, the finance committee does a great job of like combing through every aspect of the budget and telling us where we're, you know, probably overspending, where we need a little bit more funding. They do a really good job of like taking the ownership of that. So, the minute I get those two points of information, I feel like then we can make an informed decision. But I can't make a black and white without having the recommendations in front of me.
I think, Mr. Sullivan, I think you had agreed on the 5%. I mean, I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I believe the last time you were here, you...
So, we were preliminarily, preliminarily using the number that we talked about with the town accountant. And that was, that was unbelievable, that we could support that for one more year. You know, and again, it causes us to expend all our free cash for their, you know, their votes, and then we have to be serious next year about, I would say incorporating the recommendations from Mr. Madden for next year. So, yes, we can go one more year, you know, to put off capital improvement quite a bit around here.
Yeah.
But we've been doing it for, I've been doing this for 10 years, and we've never seen a capital major that we've stuck to, and we've never seen what you're doing before time meeting. So, it just says to me that, you know, I think people want capital improvement, maybe as best they can, but if we don't take capital improvement seriously, we never have.
I will say, the year you would deploy, we actually, ironically, we did. We gave them money and we got the matrix. No, it's true. And then we got the matrix ahead of time, and Frank was on his game.
I think as an overall, though, you're right. I mean, because I've been on the committee for, for as long as you have been aware of it, and you're 100% right. We never funded, we don't take it seriously.
Again, we can, the 5%, I think, as Eric was showing in his figures, we can make it work one more year, and we keep saying it, but I think we've finally hit the end of the road with using free cash as an operational, as a crutch for our operational budget.
What is that magic number that we're supposed to have, the percentage of free cash?
The magic number usually is like, the combination of your free cash and your stabilization fund should be like 5% of your revenues.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah.
And I will bring up just one more thing that we still haven't done in several years now, is we haven't put any money in stabilization.
I was just about to say that.
We, I hate to say this, but we actually did do it that one...
Couple of years ago.
Yeah, we did, that one year.
Well, that one year.
Yeah.
It didn't make, yeah, it was, it was not enough, and we don't, nothing towards OPEB, like, oh, like, all of that.
Yeah, and we're legally bound to put a percentage towards capital improvement, and we can't do it because we keep using it to pay our bills. So, it's all lost. As a committee, though, I am curious, do you guys approve, do you approve the use of spending free cash this year? Or do you recommend, I use the word recommend because I know, I know...
Yeah, we just, the, my, the full committee just got the report last week after, so it puts up for a few cents. I know that while we haven't voted any actions, I know as a group, we are not fans of using free cash for the operating budget, but we are realists as well. We are realists in the fact that sometimes you're just not going to get there. And so, you know, I think that we had, we did have some preliminary discussions about incorporating it. There's some, there's some clarification that has to go into Mr. Madden's 5 million. It's, it's 5 million over 5.
Yeah.
And what, what I think you have to make the citizenry aware of is while we are assuming a $5 million override, it is the, the select board that decides how much of that is taxed, right? Every year the budget comes out, that's an imaginary number. There's no real, there's not a bank account where this money is sitting and we go draw from, right? It's, it just gives you the ability to tax that out. So, if year one, I think Mr. Madden sent this report, we'd be above 2.5. You would only tax to the 2.5, and then the rest of it would, it would be available going forward, which, again, no one likes to hear higher taxes, but everyone thinks that 5 million, I think the perception among the town is that 5 million would hit your taxes that set down for November. That is not the case.
No, Mr. Madden was very clear, until we draw down on it and use it, then...
Absolutely. And I think when you're, when you're approaching it from an override standpoint presenting it to the town, we just have to make that, make everyone aware of it, right? Because we all know people out there who will say, $5 million, we're going to spend it all first year, and they're going to raise your taxes that whole first year, which isn't the case. I mean, you know, you all are elected and have to answer to the voters, so you have that power of control of what level of taxation we need. And that's where, I would like to say, the income has always been as conservative as possible with the town's money. So, bumping the levy up by 5 million isn't in our best interest to spend that 5 million. We just know that we have that going forward to get us back to them.
And do you guys recommend an override this year?
We haven't officially voted it, so I can only really speak for myself. I can tell you the temperament is that I have been, I have done the math, and for years, we've needed a significant override to get us over there. So, 5 million to me is the right number. You know, Mr. Madden's done the numbers, he's been doing this for a long time. We need to approve a $5 million override to reset us to a base level. Now, that's not to say, again, we've kept a very conservative fiscal budget year after year. That's not to say we're going to stop doing that. You know, it's not, we've got 5 million now that's spent. We're still looking at it as, you know, I like to think the board is, the think of is very conservative when it comes to spending the town's money. We always have been, we're stewards of the town's money, coupled with the fact that the select board, you know, always tries to keep taxes in line, you know, even if we have to increase it. But everything's increasing, everything's getting more expensive. So, how can we think that your taxes aren't going to go up? So, so, I would say, while we haven't officially voted, I would say that the majority of people is leaning towards, you know...
For next year? Or this year? So, just before you came in, we were talking about school override, operational override, and since Madden had suggested the operational override, you know, next year, most of his stuff was based on next year, you know?
So, I just remember the last time we had to do an override, it took a lot of education.
Exactly.
A lot of groundwork.
Yep.
To get people on board with the override, till we finally convinced people that, hey, listen, you know, your taxes are only going to go up $100, or 100, whatever it was, it was a nominal amount. I, I think it would be tough to get it done by now.
I agree.
I don't think, you know, unless we're able to really rally people around it, but it's already, you know, we're already, I think, you know, we're due to have a budget presented so that at least it can have a printed by the end of April, you know, middle of April. So, we're really about a month out from having to have this done, and I just don't think we have the time to educate and gather the support for 5 million. So, my recommendation would be go for the full 5 next year as a full operational override. And then, you know, all the different entities in town reel that number in and make sure that we have it, but it just, I, I just don't think we have the time.
I, I don't think we've got enough runway. That's, that's, yeah, I just don't, especially if we were going to do a 5 million, I, there's a lot of education that needs to go into that. People have to understand the mechanics of, because there's a lot of misinformation being put out there. So, we've got to get the facts to people about how it would work, and, yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't, I just don't think we have enough time.
I go back to the, the whole bylaw thing that happened at the town meeting with no education. People were up in arms.
Yes.
They didn't know what was, what was being proposed, and it went down in flames, and I don't want to see this happen.
Because it was inadequate education.
Exactly. Inadequate education. We need to have people understanding why we're doing what we're doing.
Yeah, I agree. Mr. Kinshirf?
That's it. I think, you know, I just wanted to communicate, I think everybody's understanding exactly who we're at as far as that 25 budget goes. And so, the only thing I might add, I don't even think it's worth it, but I'll add it anyways, just mechanically, the way that would work would be at town meeting, you'd vote one budget without the override, and then you'd vote another article, put in the extra money in contingent upon an override vote. That's like mechanically how it would work.
Yeah, we have done that before, yeah. So, we've definitely been through that process. So, okay. Any other questions, guys? So, did you want to take a vote on the...
I just, I, it couldn't even be informal. Are we all good with 5%? I mean, is that our number?
I mean, to find good, I, I think where we're at is sort of, we know that Whitman got the Madden report, we're trying to calibrate with them because if we don't calibrate, we end up in the super town meeting, and that doesn't do anybody any good. It's just a lot of administrative costs, gnashing of teeth, pitting partners against each other, and so, we're just trying to calibrate, and as we always have. But now, we actually have data to try to calibrate with. We've got the study and, you know...
And I'm not sure if I'm looking at the numbers right, but you're talking about if But you're talking about if we have 1.4 million in free cash, if we spend 4.4 million, we'll have 1 million left over, which is about how much the budget shortfall is if we do 5%. Am I reading that right?
That's basically.
That's what I was going to say. So, I just, I don't want to necessarily belabor this point, but it just seems that the numbers that, that were being provided right now were eerily close, no matter how you do it, to the amount of free cash we have.
They have $44,000 left.
So, but if they come in at 7.68, they wipe out the free cash. No capital projects. 6.69, they come in, wipe out the free cash. We can do some capital, but not, I don't think anything, we wouldn't want to do, we would probably want to put something in our rainy day fund. At 5%, we could, we have just enough that we can pay everything out of the free cash, but then the remaining capital projects will wipe out the rest of our free cash. So, just, no matter how you do the math, it comes out somehow to 1.4, which is exactly where we have. So, and that's assuming. So, even if we go that road, you might be looking at an override even if you don't want to do an override, depending on what this number comes in.
I would like to see us really try to push the, hold to that 5%. I really would. I, I think that we're not the only ones that should be, have to cut budgets.
I agree. I agree. I, I, I mean.
Okay, so we're, we're going to, as a select board, going to try to stick to 5 and not 3.8, but because times have changed since then. That's fine.
And what?
That's a 5% increase for the school, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, what would you like? Because we.
I just think you should stick to the 3.8.
Okay. And you feel 3.8, too?
I feel 3.8, but I'm going to be reluctantly saying 5. But I would prefer 3.8, of course, because, like, what are the, what, the rest of our town budgets, the rest of our town departments, what percentage are they going up this year? If we're going to count the school as a town department, which it isn't.
I mean, each one, I mean, each one different, but there are some, you know, 3, 4% increases and, so.
So, it averages, I think that's what we've found, the 3.8.
Yeah, but it's tough because I think it all depends on what, why. You know, you could have like, snow and ice numbers going up and then highway, you know what I mean? Like, it's a little tricky.
But all our other departments are sticking to 3.8, by the sounds of it, on aver, on average.
Or making a case. And I think that's the thing is, you know, and I, I would really, I've said this honestly, I mean, I'm boring myself with how often I've said it. But I just, I really would just like the school department to be like another department head and just have, come and make the case to us, just like our department heads do to what, and we shouldn't have to attend school committee meetings. We're, we're elected to be select board members. I, I, you know, and, and it didn't always, it wasn't always this way. Ruth used to come and provide that information to us at meetings. Long before I was a select board member, that was always the way that it was done. And before Ruth, Gilbert Whitner, was Dr. McEwen, used to come to the, to the meetings and provide the budget and answer any questions. And somewhere it's jumped the track, and I've, I've communicated this ad nauseam to everybody, the school committee, to the administration, to the town administrator, to, I don't know what else to do, so.
Do they even just refuse to come? Like, would you say, hey, would you mind just coming, giving it, you know, 20 minute, half an hour schedule?
What I was told, I, this, I will say, this year I didn't make a request again because for the last two years, I was told, we have school committee meetings, you can come to our school committee meetings. So, I, I don't.
I think if you came here and gave us something, you would have, you would reach a wider audience of people that would be able to either ask questions or get behind your cause if you're looking for more transparency and more, more support.
I mean, all of our other department heads, if there's some anomaly in their budget, we know about it. They come and talk to us about it, and we have an understanding. And they're working with each other and talking to each other and saying, well, you know what? I know you guys have got this big cost this year, we'll take one for the team. And there's some, you know, sort of like coordination. And I'm not expecting the school department to coordinate with our other departments, but I would like to have that direct communication. I, I, again, I'm boring myself because I say it every year, and it's just not happening, so.
Well, it's almost like they're, they're omnipotent, and whatever they decide they're going to do, they're going to do. And I don't think that's right.
Well, I, I vowed, and I'm sort of quasi-breaking my vow already this evening, that I'm not going to take shots across the bow this year.
I'm not trying to take shots across the bow either, but it's our budget.
I'm really trying to just state the facts, and I am stating the facts. I, I, I am crestfallen that I can't seem to impress upon anybody how important that is. And it's not just for us, because it's for the town, for the people, those five people at home that watch our meetings, you know, to, to hear, how does this impact the town of Hanson? Without, without the, you know, the rest of the school committee meeting and all the stuff that they talk about, just budget, Hanson, budget, school, how does that impact us? You know, narrow the focus. And, but we just don't seem to be able to do it. I will continue to say it and continue to bore myself and everybody else with it, but, so, thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan, that was helpful. Mr. Kane, since you're here, was there anything you wanted to share with us?
No, I think our conversation is very similar to your situation. So, really, I just want to be here to listen and show support. One line that I think maybe you do want to pay attention to a little bit when you're thinking about sustainability over time is the public county retirement line. Public county retirement line is definitely a budget buster for the next five years.
Yes.
But then after five years, there is a significant drop off. I had no idea how big the drop off was going to be, but if you look into that number, it's really substantial. It's not like 150,000. For us, it's like over $1 million drop off from that line in five years. And I think, I didn't hear, I listened to Mr. Madden's presentation.
He did mention it. He didn't delve into it, but he mentioned it, yeah.
Just making sure he's aware of that or given some perspective about that, or something.
Can I just comment on that? Yeah. So, basically, you know, all these, all these towns aren't funding OPEB. So, like, plan wise, the idea is everybody's saying, once those retirement systems drop off, we can use the difference and fund our OPEB.
That's a good idea.
That's basically, so when we go to the bond radio agencies, you know, we say, hey, what are you doing about OPEB? Oh, we're just going to wait, once this drops off in five years.
That's a great idea.
The difference, so.
That's a good idea. Okay, any further questions? So, did we want to take a vote? I'm sorry to keep circling back to this, but Ed, you keep saying we didn't take a vote.
I don't know if we need a vote or if it needs to be informal, it's up to you.
All right, okay. So, Mr. George is, wants the 3.8. Everybody else is, I, I don't know what, how, I don't want to say okay, but resign to 5%. I don't know how to describe that, but 5% is where we're at.
I go to 0%.
Okay. Oh, okay. Mr. George is getting controversial down the other end there, okay.
I go to 0%.
All right. All right, thanks, Eric. Ms. Green, I know you've got to go join the, the FinCom meeting. Did you want to quickly whip through a town administrator report, or did you want to forego that, or?
Well, I, I do have some, so I'll, I'll just quickly give you what I have in my town ministry report. So, I have some exciting news. So, I don't know if you remember, I don't know how many months ago it was, that we were awarded a year mark of $100,000 for the subsurface utility engineering for the Edmonton-Rockland water pipe. Finally get the email with the contact person and know what we need to submit now for, to get access to that money. So, we are working on getting the proposal with the, with the scope of work. I have the contact person, so we are sharing that information to get it to the Mass DOT so we can finally move forward with that. This has been months and months and months and months in the making. But here we are today. Thank you to our legislative partners, Senator Brady, former Representative Josh Cutler's office for partnering with us, the Old Colony Planning Council, all of these, all of these entities, these people helping us get that year mark $100,000. So, we are well on our way finally. So, that was great news.
Ms. Green, wasn't that the Maquon Tip Project?
It is, it is, it is connected to the Maquon Tip Project, that the Mass DOT is requiring this to be, this evaluation to be done to that Edmonton-Rockland water pipe to determine where, where it's located as far as its proximity to the surface and possibly along the line of where the work will be done, what condition the pipe is in.
I understand, but I understand that today, we were told by Old Colony Planning Council that the Maquon Tip Project has been taken out of their queue.
I had not heard that.
I believe that email came out today. So, we may want to think about whether we're going to spend that money.
Okay. All right.
And we may also want to make inquiries into Old Colony Planning Council as to why we would be jumping through hoops like this to try to meet their requirement and appealing to our state legislators to have them do this at the last minute.
I hadn't even seen that email yet.
Okay, well.
So, I'll follow up. Oh, okay.
I don't mean to, I'm sorry to be a Debbie Downer. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Okay. Actually, all right. Well.
Is there anything on, okay, keep going, Ms. Green. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, that's okay. That's all right. You know, I had just, I attended a legislative meeting on Friday where town administrators, where Mass Municipal Association sends out their legislative partners to give us updates on legislation that's brewing that impacts municipalities. The new cannabis host community agreement regulations, stormwater, wetlands protection, the municipal empowerment act. Those are regulations right now that are going through the system. Hopefully, if all of these are, are signed into law, the cannabis host community agreement, that does not work so well with municipalities because it basically could invalidate all host community agreements across the board and cause municipalities and cannabis company retailers to enter into new agreements. Hanson really is not too much involved with that because we only have a cultivation. The municipal empowerment act is really important because it loosens up some of the procurement requirements and some other requirements. So, we're going to watch this all very closely. And today, select board chair Laura Kammert, myself, member Ed Hill, and a number of department heads attended a table talk exercise at the fire station. It was coordinated by Fire Chief O'Brien and the Massachusetts Maritime Academy cadets. It was a wonderful exercise. Really opened our eyes to what we need to do to prepare for these extreme weather events that have been happening. It really opened our eyes on the work to be done here. But really, kudos to Chief O'Brien for coordinating all of this and having this exercise done. It was really very well done. Select board, and then again, our office, select board office, we're regularly working on the warrant to prepare for town meetings, regularly working on the budget. Of course, we're watching the Whitney-Hanson Regional School District School Committee to see what they're going to do with their votes. Wednesday, March 20th meeting, 6:30 PM is when they have an agenda item to vote the acceptance. And last, again, I kind of mentioned this at the front, our building department is going to be on reduced hours for the next couple of weeks. We have, we have an employee who is out. Please check the website, Facebook, other social media platforms for the department head hours. Please call ahead before you come to town hall, because as our building inspector does need to go out to conduct inspections. Their phone number is 781-293-5503. And just report to the Mass Trails Grant for the Bay Circuit Trail Relocation Project. The closeout report was accepted by the Mass DCR, and we received the money today, which was $100,000 in that final report.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so you're going to go meet with FinCom and then hopefully be down with us for executive session at some point?
Yes.
Okay, great.
I will be back.
All right. So, next on the agenda is the town meeting, May Annual Special Town Meeting. Shall we just quickly breeze through and just get a familiarity with what we're looking at? Let's start with the May Special Town Meeting. We've got, you know, little housekeeping articles, I would call them, including the ARPA money that we had already discussed, which is Article 2 with Lisa for the culvert repair, pond management, ambulance. Then we've got something for grading, which we always have for the filling in potholes of grading. Article 4, Ms. McDowell, any expenditure of community preservation money can only be proposed by the Community Preservation Committee. It can never, ever be proposed by anybody else. That's according to the Community Preservation Act. So, I know Mr. DeFries was overseeing that and sort of like he was the proponent, but it has to be proposed by community preservation. Then we've got the Prep Place Culvert, and that pretty much is it. There's no real meat on the bones there on the special. Then if we look at the annual town meeting, we've got treasure, oh, this is great. Our new treasurer collector has got some suggestions on checks and balances. For instance, no debit cards because they're so, those are so easily used fraudulently. And also some banking and various other changes. Then we've got the town clerk salary, right to farm. Shall we get into it? So, Article 4, we had voted to include this. Do we feel, no, do we know what we're getting into? You know, do we know, because I can't remember who the heck it was who was telling us, and I thought you were there for this conversation, but maybe you weren't. Somebody was telling us that they had passed the right to farm, and there were pitfalls for the unwary, because if you didn't, I don't even know.
No, I wasn't there.
Okay, they had a whole list of things that if we didn't think about it, it could cause a problem, and I.
I had heard that, and it was.
Oh, maybe you were the one who was with me.
I didn't, no, it wasn't me, but I, somebody on the planning board mentioned that this really should go through the planning board.
The right to farm should?
The right to farm.
Really?
I think it was that, because they just, just, we need an overview. What, what does it mean? You know what I mean?
That's actually a good, that's actually a good thought, Mr. Hill. Ms. McDowell, I'm wondering, could we possibly refer this article? I'm not saying that they absolutely have to approve it, but I would like to get the planning board's thoughts on this article. And maybe for that matter, ZBA as well, because they may have some insights that they want. And also the agricultural committee, but are you guys even meeting?
It, it, that has.
All right, so it's, it's just a name only kind of thing.
As a matter of fact, I believe in the town offices, it's been disbanded.
Oh, okay.
I'm not sure, but although Ruth Sylvester got her letter that she was re-upped.
We, we've never officially taken a vote to disband the agricultural.
I know, I know that.
I mean, it may be just because there's no people.
I can, I can just answer a couple of things here. I mean, we don't have very many pieces of property in town that this would absolutely cover. I mean, the Sylvester Farm, Old Cottage Farm on Route 14. I think there's another one down the other end of Maquon. I mean, I'm racking my brain. There, there's only two or three pieces of property. It would be nice to give, to offer them the protection that this does, but this does not help individual people that have, you know. My friends over on East Washington Street, they have enough land, but they've taken their land out of the farm because of money needs, you know, monetary banking stuff. But, you know, there's not, there's not a lot of people that this is actually going to cover. It does, it, it's true that it does raise property rates. People like a right to farm town. I'm, I'm the last person to disdain this, but what are we protecting?
I, I'm in favor of it. It's just that I know somebody had said, well, you might be in favor of it, but there's pitfalls for the unwary.
I want to know the pitfalls because I've never heard, I've never heard downsides for the right to farm.
You know, maybe it was Kate that said, you know.
It was somebody in the, in the audience. I remember they were sitting here.
Okay, you, so I'm not just.
No, during one of our meetings.
Okay, all right.
Was it one of our meetings?
Yeah, somebody was sitting in the audience, and they said.
You know what? Was it Michael Fleming from ZBA?
Yes, it was.
Okay, all right. It's all coming back to me.
Michael was on, he was on the board with us. He was on the, yeah, the board.
Yeah, he knew, yeah, he referenced you in something. I remember it vaguely.
Yeah.
I've never heard anything, a downside to it, but that doesn't, but I don't know much about it, so I don't know.
He really felt very passionate about it, and I, but I couldn't quite glom onto the context. So, let's refer to planning and ZBA, not that, you know, it's the end but all be all, and if they push back, that we won't still put it on there. And then, can we just have, get, do you guys think we should have Kate just review this? Has she already reviewed it?
Yeah, yeah, I think she already did.
All right.
I, I just never heard a downside.
I'm fine with it. I just wanted to make sure we're responsive.
The one thing that's not mentioned here is there are specific land requirements to meet the definition of the word farm. It has to have so many acres, and the one acre that the house is on can't count.
I wonder if that's, she's reciting Mass General laws.
That's where it's all defined.
Which is great, except to your point, though, I think we should probably try to spell out a little bit of it. Because who the heck's going to look up Mass General Law, Chapter 90?
It's all defined up in there.
Yeah, okay.
This was presented years and years ago.
Yep.
It failed because people didn't have an understanding of what the details of this was.
Well, and there was a couple of cows being kept in subhuman conditions, and people lost their minds.
And also it failed because there were real estate people that spoke vehemently against it, and I don't understand why, because it doesn't harm.
Yeah, that was weird. I don't know. Okay, all right. So, we'll refer to that and maybe see if Kate could expand on the Mass General Law piece of it. Article 5. Article 5, 84,000 for pond management. I know Ms. Green has had Mr. Skellinger, our conservation agent, working on connecting with other towns to see what they're doing for pond management. We've had Mr. Clements come here and make a passionate plea for us to start getting some kind of a pond management program in place. I personally spoke to a couple, actually all of the Plymouth County Commissioners and said, I think the county should take this on because you've got all these different towns that have got the same problem, and we could get better buying power if we were all handling this together. And I think that there's a meeting that I think you guys were all invited to with the Plymouth County-
Thursday.
Yeah, is it this Thursday?
Tomorrow.
Oh, boy, it seems, no.
Is it tomorrow night?
Tomorrow's Wednesday, but is it?
Yeah, Thursday.
Yeah, it's Thursday. At Caston Flagon?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so, um, I'm going to mention it again.
Six o'clock.
Because I mentioned it at the Old Colony Planning thing when I saw them, and then when they came to give us the check, I mentioned it again.
And St. Laura Wright did talk about she has that, they have that dredge they-
Yes, they've got equipment.
Yeah, they've got equipment.
They've got access to equipment.
Yeah.
And that's the other thing, is maybe we could share some regional equipment, you know? We don't all have to try to do this, reinvent the wheel ourselves, but somehow we do. Okay, so, there's that. Article 6, this was, Ms. Green had talked to us about increasing the fees for zoning enforcement because zoning violations right now, we've got no teeth. I mean, 50 bucks, people practically tell us to go packing, like, who really cares? 50 bucks? So, that increases that. Then we'll have wage and personnel. Are we having that this evening?
Uh-huh.
Yes.
7:45.
Yep, so we'll go over the, oh, thank you for keeping us honest, okay. We'll have that. And then, so, number 8, and this rattled around in my brain, and this is not true. Town Council's comment is inaccurate.
Okay.
What happened was, years ago, there was, in, at town meeting, we voted to create a recreation commission. A commission has to be voted at town meeting. We did that. That's awesome. Then Mr. Malisi came to us and said, we don't want to call, be called the Recreation Commission because we're not really doing recreation, we're only doing Camp Kawani. So, we voted to rename them the Camp Kawani Commission, which therefore meant that the actual Recreation Commission, which we now need to create, is defunct according to what the town meeting votes were that was taken. Are you following me?
Mm-hmm. That's what I thought it was.
Okay, so-
I just need a confirmation.
So, now we need to recreate the Recreation Commission that we renamed the Camp Kawani Commission. And if you can follow that, then you get a prize. Okay, Article 9?
To be clear, we're not reinstituting the Recreation Commission, which was called, which, what we turned to-
Not taking back Camp Kawani.
We're creating a brand-new, distinctly different Recreation Commission.
Brand-new, shiny, different mission.
That's fine. I just wanted a confirmation for that, so I'm happy.
If we were creative, we'd perhaps call it something different, but I guess we're not that creative. Article 9, that is, this is good. This is tightening up timelines so that we've got adequate time to work with citizens' petitions. As you guys know, we've had people just sort of volley incomplete citizens' petitions, maybe with not the greatest legal lease, and it doesn't give us enough time to pass it by legal counsel and then get back to the petitioners and maybe present something that's actually actionable. So, so that is what that is. These are capital improvement items, which I was glad to hear from Mr. Kinsheriff that we might be able to do something with that. And then this is to increase capital improvement expenses to cost over 20,000. Should make that change.
It's at 35,000. We want to reduce it down to 20,000 so we can make, be more transparent with people, put more things on the matrix.
That totally makes sense. And then, so the town vote to amend the Town of Hanson general bylaws, Selina First such and such. This would reduce, oh, they need to reduce the FinCon membership because I think they're having problems keeping that number of people and getting a quorum. And then this is classification, then we've got-
Just before we skim, this probably should be included with Article 7.
And the wage and personnel stuff? Absolutely.
Okay.
Do you agree?
Are we on 13? I'm still reading 12.
Yeah, we were on 13.
Oh, yeah, okay, uh, yes.
Yeah, okay. 14, laptop for, from ambulance revenues. Again, this is Fire Chief, he's taking it from his free cash or available sources, electric blankets and what have you. The 16 is the annual required community preservation articles so that they allocate the money into the buckets that they need to. Article 17, there's something, Webster Billings, I guess we're going to, it's not accurate, oh, this is some housekeeping article. It looks like we didn't properly register it or some sort of thing. And Article 18 is that soccer field that they did at the middle school ended up costing a little bit more than they had predicted, so they went back to community preservation and asked for another 50,000, but they also got grant money, so, but their, this article is to sync up with the additional 50,000 they need. Additional hours for the planning board assistant, MBTA communities, which is controversial. I'm not going to, I'm not glossing over it because it's not controversial, but there's really not much for us to talk about. What I am hoping is that the planning board has a very good proposal about the process they use to get to the, to, you know, where they are with what area they're proposing, what the ramifications are if we do not pass this, and all of that. I hope the planning board's going to do a good job of prepping for this because it's, it's their article, so.
Has that request been put in for the, the planning board?
Pardon?
The, the planning board knows that, that you want them to do that?
Yes, I have said that to the planning board chair, and maybe not so lovely a way. Okay, and then Camp Kawani, that's, you know, their, their budget. Then, reduce applicable, of eight to two, oh, this is, the Board of Assessors had proposed that we, this is for hardships, so for financial hardships for property tax deferment. Then there's the, we had had Ms. Stolfer and Mrs. Cefardo come and speak to us about the, using the money that we had previously allocated as ARPA funds to be used for the grant for the library. Then we've got, blah, 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 something about pumps for the water department, which is water money. 30,000 for the Conservation Commission to replenish their funds. Age-old eradicate invasive fragmities at Smitty's Bog, Ever Present, Evergreen. And then we've got, what is this, Ed? Do you know anything about this? So, Whitman Street Conservation Commission, 30,000 square foot vacant lot on Whitman that were being offered by some, I don't know. It looks like you guys took a vote on it from the Conservation Commission. Does it sound familiar, ring a bell?
I mean, no more than it's-
That's okay. That's fine. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but it's from the Conservation Commission, so hopefully.
Put on the town conservation.
And then we need to do key card door access at the fire station. So, that's excellent. And then, increase the, do we agree with the, I, I don't think we've actually discussed this one. I think Ms. Green had proposed that the state change the ability for towns to impose a sales tax of 1%. Right now, we're at 0.75%. What, what are people's thoughts, particularly since this is being proposed by the Select Board and we haven't discussed it? I just thought-
This caught my eye last week. This caught my eye last week. I didn't know where it came from.
Well, I mean, we have gotten revenues. It's been actually very steady revenue stream and it, you know-
So, it's easy to keep at 1%?
Yeah, and it all, honestly, it, it's a routing error, really, in the average bill.
Is it 1% though? Isn't it like 1?
It's 0.01.
Is it like 1% of a penny or something?
Yeah.
Because it's not-
No, it's, yeah, you know what? You're right. It's point-
It's 0.01?
It's 0.01. It's 0.01. What are you saying?
0.25.
That's 1%.
You're raising it by 0.25.
Exactly, yeah.
1%.
Yeah. Now, I just remember when we first put this out there, is it 1% of the actual bill?
It's 1%.
I thought it was 1% of, like, a fractional or nominal percent.
It's a 1% of the bill that's added, it's added on to the 6.25.
So, it's a true 1%? It is?
It will be.
Hundred-dollar, hundred-dollar bill?
It's a buck.
It's a dollar?
Yeah.
That's what it is?
Big whoop, I know.
But it all adds up. And actually, I miss, I wish Ms. Green was here to tell us what the dollar amount, but it, it was rather impressive, really, for just that little-
Yeah, I think the first time we did it was like $40,000.
Yeah, a quarter, I think.
The, the amount we got the, from the past year, maybe be added to the explanation or?
That's a great idea. Could, you know, maybe she could say historically, you know, this has gotten us blah, blah, blah. We obviously don't want to commit to anything because we don't know what sales, you know, the past sales will be future sales, but, you know, if we could get, get a little something or at least if she could be prepared to talk about it.
Yeah, I'd like to hear a little bit more on it because I, I am curious if it's, if it's a true 1%.
If it's a real significant-
It, no, it really, because I've seen it on the bill.
Yeah.
But you don't even, you have to look for it because honestly, you don't really even notice that it's-
So, it's only going up, up a quarter of a percent?
So, instead of paying seven, you're going to pay seven?
We're not adding a percent at this time. We're only adding a quarter of a percent.
For what?
No, 1% comes back to the town.
If you buy like a salad wrap at Walmart or whatever, it's 1% of that. I just remember it being, maybe it was just the first time we did it.
Walmart's in health.
Walmart's in, well, if they were here, yes.
Well, we're the one town in the area that doesn't-
Right, but most other towns have 6.75.
The state just changed this. This just is something, so I don't know that anybody else has made any changes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's just become available. That's my understanding. Okay, this is-
Is that regulated by the state?
Yes, the state is the one who says this is the max you can do. Yeah, that's the max you can do.
They do one, two, one. Last year when we did this, I think we were one of the old, one of, so like two towns in the area that didn't have a meal station.
Yes, yes. It turned out we were getting taxed by all of our surrounding towns when we go eat. Pan, bro, can over, blah, blah, blah. Okay, Article 30, yeah, the, chapter 90, we have to do that in order to spend our chapter 90 money. Then this is the, oh, this is just the housekeeping annual budget lines. And then 15,000 dollars for the animal shelter. Where are people at with that?
I think it's, are they progressing? I mean, Lisa's been working on it. I know she's-
Lisa's been working on it. She's-
She's got volunteers.
She's got volunteers. She's, I believe-
Rejo on the fence.
Charlie Baker, she's got people that have donated products and blah, blah, blah. I just want to make sure since it's being proposed by us that we're-
Well, I, I want to see the animal shelter happen. I, I can't, I didn't even realize back in the day that we had gotten rid of the pound.
I don't even remember any dialogue about it. I think it just happened.
It just happened.
Like, in the middle of the night, yeah.
What is the 15? Is there, is that like a, a number that actually has like numbers?
Yeah, yeah, she's going to do the roof, they've got to paint, they can't, there's like border health regulations, there can't be any like rust is all, I mean, I-
But it's the 15 like-
The health fence has to be regalvanized or something like that they're doing.
Yeah, she got estimates, so it's definitely, da, 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 for acceptor. This is a chapter 90. I'm not sure what the difference between this and the prior one is, but sure, Ms. Green can describe that to us. These seem like redundant, Lynn. Article-
I was told I didn't have them, but I thought I did, so maybe.
Okay, because Article 30 seems sort of like 34, 33, and then 34 sort of seems like Article 31.
30.
Well, no, 31-
Oh, okay, yeah.
Is kind of like Article 34.
Yeah.
Right?
I think she didn't see them and so she thought I missed them.
Okay.
I just put them in again to make it, I can come out.
Okay, and there was one other article, as you guys will recall, or you may not, but a few years, in 2021, we had an article for, let's see, how do we do that? That, that required that any contractor in town that had not finished a project would not be able to basically continue and do a new project if they didn't take care of all of the things that they needed to take care of from the prior project. It had to make it through the State House, it had to go through legislature. It's in the process of going through legislature. I just thought I'd update you on that. But we also passed a bylaw that same year that said all town departments, whether elected, town departments committees and boards have to record, whether by, by audio or video, their meetings. And this was an attempt to increase transparency so that if people actually can't attend all of these meetings, which is hard to believe, people wouldn't have the time to do that, but that you could just at your leisure bring up the meeting, listen to what was discussed. And yes, minutes are great, but minutes don't always capture the full flavor of the meeting. Well, we have had quite a few boards and committees that are not posting those audio and video recordings. So, I think we need to do something about that, Ms. McDowell, AKA you're subbing in for Ms. Green, so I'm just sort of saying this to you as well. And then similarly, I would like to find out whether you guys would be interested in having a bylaw in this town meeting warrant that requires the boards and committees to post their minutes and their agendas on our website. We do not have anything that does that. They are not required to do it, and some of them are not doing it.
I would, I would suggest we do do that, and at least it's then known that that's the process you need to follow. Right now, it's voluntary.
Right now, it's voluntarily, voluntary, and we've been encouraging and other, and people have not been picking up what we're putting down.
It's not voluntary to record the meetings.
It's not, but they're still not doing it.
Right.
And it is, but it is voluntary to post the minutes. And it's not required by the state to post minutes and, and, and you have to post them, but it's not required to post them on the website.
Where do you post them?
Well, according to the law, you have to post them. And I, I mean, this is hard to believe, but this bulletin, but literally the law requires, the bulletin board in the lobby here. Because what could possibly go wrong in the lobby exposed to the elements of posting an agenda?
Right.
It seems extremely inclusive for everybody that might need to get to it.
Are you talking about agendas or minutes?
Agendas have to be posted.
Right.
Minutes, you do not need to post, but they need to be available if somebody asks for them. I would like to require that they have to be put on our website, and I want to require it from both elected and appointed boards. I, I just don't see, without video recording or audio recording and posted minutes and agendas, you know, we complain people aren't engaged, we complain people don't show up at town meeting, we complain people aren't educated, and if we aren't doing something to try to help people get that information when and where they need it, I just feel like, you know, so, do you guys agree that we would like an article that requires boards I, I just feel like, you know, so do you guys agree that we would like an article that requires boards and committees, whether elected or appointed, to post minutes and agendas on our website?
I, I.
I think it's a good idea.
What do you think?
How are you gonna enforce it?
Well, I'll get to that in a second. Do you guys think that that's a good idea?
Yeah.
You, you're doubtful. You're getting a doubtful, doubting Thomas look. I don't know what's.
No, it's, uh, no, I think, I, I would just defer to, to town, to town media, I guess.
Yeah, well, no, no, but I know, but I'm just saying included in, yeah, included. Oh, please, people lost their minds about us asking them to videotape and audio record their meetings. I was like, what? Why would you possibly have a problem? Um, so, um, all right, so can you, okay. Um, and I think I even sent you, because I had drafted something back in twenty twenty-one, and Ms. Fedoroff had said to me, oh, you could just adopt a policy, a policy would be fine. Well, it turns out a policy has not been fine, because for three years, people haven't been doing that. Now, to your point, um, Ms., Mrs. Rain, um, so, uh, in, uh, June, we will be doing our reappointments. Um, and I think one of the things I would like to know, I don't know if our office can do this easily, I've done it, sort of on a back-of-the-envelope type of thing, who's posting it, who isn't? Who's recording, who isn't? I certainly think any board or committee that we are appointing, I want to be following these bylaws. The other elected boards and whatever, I don't know what we've got, what teeth we've got to enforce, but if we're appointing people, I want to know that they're doing what we've said is important to us. Um, so what do you guys think about that?
I mean, I think it should be done, but I'm wondering about the enforcement. I mean, if somebody doesn't do it, they don't do it.
I think we'll have to ask Kate what we can do, like, you know.
You don't want, I mean, you, you don't want to hurt somebody.
No, 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 I'm, no, I'm not, I'm definitely not, yeah.
They're volunteers, so.
Well, that, that's where my reluctance comes in, because I, you know, I, I want to encourage people. It, it seems right, right? Like transparency, you, all of that, I agree with all of that stuff, but you want to encourage people that maybe aren't technologically savvy and maybe struggle with that. You don't want to penalize them for trying to volunteer.
I think we could do a training, right? Lynn, could we teach people?
They've had training on how.
Well, no, the department, the, the secretaries and everybody, but I mean, like, say, Joe, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm just saying you, but like, you probably are already doing it, but say, like, the High Street Parkway, what if they don't have somebody who knows how to post, you know, on the website? What if they don't have that? Like, could they give, ma- maybe that's part of the problem. You know, could they give it to our office to post? Could we teach them how to post?
I think we should teach them.
Okay.
I personally do not want to be responsible for the entire town's.
You would, you wouldn't be responsible for the entire town, because.
It wouldn't have come to that, because.
No, no, it would not, because, for instance, planning has their own staff, uh, conservation has their own staff, Board of Health has their own staff. It would really just be a couple of committees that we, that are our committees, they're select board committees, that wouldn't have their own staff. I mean, even that, like, Community Preservation's got Shirley Schindler, she's their scribe, you know, and there might be other people that, you know, other, other boards and committees that are more technologically savvy, and they would be fine. I really think it would only be one or two that are like, oh, we don't know how to do this, and maybe we could train them. We can talk about this at another meeting, but I just wanted to kind of throw that out there, because I was looking for minutes for one particular committee, which I shall not mention, and they haven't posted since twenty twenty-two. Okay, so that's a problem. That's a.
Is it the drainage committee?
It's not the drainage committee, and it's not about retention basins, okay?
It's not about that?
No, so don't, don't taunt me.
Just want to say.
Um, okay.
No, they haven't, um, they haven't met in a while.
Yeah.
They haven't met in a long time, that's all. They're notorious for. Yeah, oh, are you? Before that, it's good.
All right, um, okay, so anything else, any, are there any other articles or things that you guys were hoping that would be in here that aren't in here? Okay, all right. Um, and of course, we don't have the budget, because we don't have the budget yet, because it's all hinging on what happens tomorrow night. I hope, to the extent you guys are available tomorrow night, you are able to, um,
Give a flag.
To, to go to the assessment. Um, okay. Um.
The drainage committee.
Okay, so then that brings us to approving minutes. Now, I just want to be clear, we're approving executive session minutes that have been approved in executive session. Um, these are all minutes that we are taking a vote to approve and not release. So I will entertain a motion to approve but not release the January ninth, twenty twenty-four executive session, January twenty-third, twenty twenty-four executive session, February sixth, twenty twenty-four executive session, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four executive session, and February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four executive session.
So moved.
Second.
To, um, approve and not release. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Fantastic. That brings us to one-day liquid licenses. Um, I will entertain a motion to approve the baby shower on four twenty-one, twenty-four, the wedding on seven thirteen, twenty-four, and the party on nine seven twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Committee updates. Um, anybody have anything burning?
We're, we're meeting next Thursday, I think.
Okay.
Highway department.
All right, that's awesome.
I just want to let people know that with, uh, with the plan going to the planning board, um, it's probably going to heat up with some of our attendees for the High Street Park. So our next two meetings are, uh, April first and April fifteenth.
Okay.
In this room?
Yes, it, it'll be here.
Uh, okay. McQuan Property Reuse Committee, um, I had a thought, which I wanted to pass by you guys. I'm wondering, we've all heard from Tony what his kind of thought process was, I'm wondering whether it might be a good idea for us to just have a public forum, just a public session, where people can just give us their ideas for what they want with that property. So although we've heard from Tony, and that might be a starting point, just to see what other ideas people have. What do you guys think about that? Just have like a brainstorming session, open to the public.
Sure. I've seen things on the book about, you know, people saying, oh, you should sell it and build on it, and other people, you know, I mean, they, they jump into the fray.
The, the board had taken a vote not to sell it, and, uh, mostly because honestly, the money that we would get would not be worth what we're giving up, which is a prime piece of real estate that we will never, ever, ever get again.
Absolutely, one hundred percent on board with that hundred, hundred-year plan.
Yep.
I am. I think that's a brilliant use of that property, but we should listen to, I mean.
So that's what I, I, I just thought, you know, it's, we've got the, we've got the blank footprint, so I thought, you know, let's just co- have everybody come together and let us know what they'd like to have done with it, and then we can take it under advisement and then figure out what the next step is. What do you guys think about that?
I agree with that a hundred percent. My, my one worry I have, and I mentioned it at the Camp Kwanee meeting, is I don't like just having one, this is our option. We're either gonna do it, or we don't, because that option, and I, I think it's, it, I don't, there's no cost, but it is, it can be extremely expensive. And I, I would like to see two or three options for the town to be able to vote on, even if it's, you know, from the town planner or from somebody else, but there's gotta be, there's gotta be another option other than Tony's plan, and I love Tony's plan, don't get me wrong, but it's just the cost of getting to Tony's plan that, that bothers me.
Well, I think, I hear what you're saying, a lot of what he's talking about, um, particularly all of the fields and everything, community preservation money, a hundred percent can pay for all of that. And they've already discussed it as a committee. Um, no votes been taken, because, you know, but, um, it wouldn't be additional taxation, um, so you've got that. But, um, and in terms of presenting three plans to, um, voters, we typically don't do that. What we would do is probably have the three plans presented to us, and then we would make a decision as a board about what we feel the strongest about and present that to people. Um, it's, that's, you gotta, you gotta narrow it down, and we have to take a lead on it, but at least maybe have something else presented to us that we can noodle.
So given that, I think we definitely need to have.
Yeah.
I also don't see anything wrong with just backing a great sounding plan that'd benefit the whole town, for all the kids, it'd benefit the senior center, it'd benefit the library, it'll benefit the whole.
I agree, I, I, look, I, to be clear, I like Tony's plan. Um, I, I do, um, and I think it was a stroke of genius.
We should listen to what other people say.
And I, I applaud him, but I just want to make sure that we're being inclusive, and that we are gathering others' thoughts, because maybe there's another thought out there that we haven't even entertained. So that's kind of, I, so I just wanted to, I, because, so that's my long-winded way of saying, I think I'm gonna pump the brakes on any further McQuan reuse committee meetings and open, have it, have some kind of a public forum, which I haven't even mentioned to Ms. Green, so, um.
She, she's.
We'll have to discuss that. Well, we'll discuss that later.
How many people are on the McQuan reuse?
It's three, three voting members.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think somebody was thinking of leaving, we were just like.
Yeah, she did just leave, yeah, so we, we need another member, but, uh, three, three, I should say, three citizens at large and meet. So it's, yeah. Um, okay, so, um, that was that. Um, any other? Whitman-Hanson Regional Agreement Committee, I don't think we'll probably meet until after the whole school budget has settled. Um, and I don't, I don't have anything else. Um, uh, we already heard the town administrative report, so with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to what?
We, don't we have to do this wage across an open session?
Uh, we do, but I'm wondering, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, we'll have a little biology break,
Yes.
and then we will, um, open it, the wage personnel. Does that sound okay with you?
Yeah.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn, um, from our open session. The plan will be to have a short break, um, recess, and then we will come back. Um, Mr., the gavel will be turned over to Mr. Weeks for wage and personnel, and then we will adjourn to executive session, and we will not be coming out in open session. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Boom.
All right, perfect. All right, we have, uh, welcome to the Wage and Personnel Board Meeting, Tuesday, March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Supposed to be at seven forty-five, but we're starting at seven fifty-three.
Oh.
Um, new business, we're gonna call right into new business, review the, of the Wage and Personnel Bylaw classifications. I'll pass it over to, to Ms. Green, who can walk us through this, please.
So, um, actually, Mr. Chair, we, um, will have Maria Katie from the Collins Center joining us to go over the classification study.
Okay.
Um, so if we could maybe take the bylaw out of order, um, she will be joining us just at eight o'clock.
Okay. Um, so do you want to go into the, the classification compensation study? Or is that, that's what she's doing, right?
That's what she's going to be.
So what about?
Joe, the bylaw.
I, I'm just trying to go where it is in the agenda. Where is it in the agenda?
She's number two in the agenda.
Right.
Bylaw is number one.
Right, I, I was going in order. That's why I'm confused, I was going in order.
All right.
So review of the wage personnel by, okay, all right. Can you walk us through that, please?
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay, so, um, we have Article seven, um, of the annual special town meeting. Um, this is the, uh, classification compensation bylaw, uh, wage personnel. So what we did was, um, as you can see, we have a column for, that was from the October second, twenty twenty-three special town meeting, and the, basically the salaries and wages. And then what we have for our May annual town meeting, twenty twenty-four, um, most of the salary ranges have remained the same.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there are some, some changes, you'll notice, under Section eleven B, administrative and/or full-time. Uh, we have the executive assistant, and these will be in blue on the sheet.
Mm-hmm.
Um, basically, we have twenty-eight dollars to thirty-eight dollars on October second, twenty twenty-three. We've just changed that from twenty-eight dollars to forty dollars, um, basics, and if you notice, right below is the assistant to the police chief. This is in line with the assistant to the police chief, um, included with that. Uh, our veterans agent, annual salary, so what we did was, um, for October two, October second, twenty twenty-three, we had it at fifty-five thousand to sixty-two, but, um, with the two percent increase puts it just over the sixty-two, so we've increased that from fifty-five thousand to the sixty-three on the range.
Okay.
Um, so the remainder of the salaries, uh, and, and wages are the same until we get to our animal inspector. Um, so the animal inspector for October second, twenty twenty-three, uh, the sixteen hundred figure should be thirty-five, was it thirty-two hundred or thirty-five hundred?
Thirty-five.
Um, the town clerk said that, that, that amount there was voted at either thirty-two or thirty-five hundred at the October special town meeting. So we, we've just, we've put it on the May special town meeting for, um, that amount. Because she, in the budget, the animal inspector has already surpassed the sixteen hundred dollar wage amount. Um, the assistant veteran agent, the committee clerical, emergency clerical, um, in the October, they had them fifteen dollars to fifteen dollars, but we corrected that for the May, fifteen dollars to twenty-five dollars for the range, for those three positions. Um, and then the public buildings custodian, um, it was at eighteen dollars to twenty-four dollars. Um, there's just a slight increase from eighteen dollars to thirty dollars in the May, um, town meeting. And that, basically, those are the only changes on this. Um, under the explanation, we will be updating the explanation to talk about those positions, um, and the changes. Right now, it's just the old language, but we'll update it to the new language. Um, and also in this, there were some positions in the bylaw that are now union positions, which would be the Camp Kwanee event coordinator is now a union position. And, um, what was the other position that was the union position? Um, transfer station, and, uh, transfer station. So they had transfer station positions, again, in the part-time positions, but those are union positions, so that position, those position, that position was removed from the bylaw as well.
Okay.
Um, and that, um, basically covers. Also, too, just to let the, the board know, in Section eleven A professional positions, and then Section eleven B administrative annual full-time, if you'll notice, um, recreation director and grant writer procurement administrator are.
No, they won't see that, it's gone.
In Section A, we will be removing that, that position.
No, it's already gone.
Oh, it's already gone. Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I must be looking at an, an older one, so.
Yeah, it's showing on this one.
They're, they're double, but they will be removed from one, from, um, Section A and moved to Section B. Yes.
Well, well.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Um, um. To the extent that it may take our building inspector a while to get his certifications to be the building commissioner, and to the extent we might need to pay somebody, where are we reflecting that?
We can reflect that right, well, we have inspector of buildings part-time, hourly rate, so we do have that position.
But it wouldn't be an assistant inspector of buildings.
Right.
It's a building commissioner.
Well, we'd have to create a position in here. Um, we'll have to create a position for that, because we don't really know what someone else would charge us for that, um, service.
I just thought I'd bring it up, because I know we're not going to use the individual that we were previously going to use, and so we may get charged.
Okay, yeah, we, we, we're gonna have to look into that and see what we do, and we'll have to create a position under the part-time positions.
Good catch. Any other questions? The only thing I see is just a typo on the explanation that's, the D is missing in board.
What's that?
And I've noticed we haven't increased the milk inspector in a few years now, so.
Well, you know, it's interesting, because I was looking for the milk inspector on the budget and didn't find a milk inspector, so that's why I hadn't done anything with that line, because I don't know who our milk inspector is, and we don't have a line in the budget, so I have to actually ask our health agent about that.
I appreciate you looking into that.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Because I, I did look at that, I, I looked at all these positions in the budget.
It's too funny.
And milk inspector, I, I did not see, so, um, could not put anything in for that one.
They can make up to three hundred dollars a year.
Yeah, big, big money. Keep in mind, it's a range, though, we don't have to spend it, just because it's in there.
Don't give up your gate jar, Ed.
You can find more in your couch cushion.
Get to smell like sour milk and.
Okay, so do you need us to take a vote on this?
We need to talk some more. Um, and, and, yes, before, um, that, there is one more that's proposed by the fire chief. Um, this is Article thirteen on the special town meeting. Um, he's proposing the emergency management support position, um, which, there's an explanation, it's the, this is requested, um, to assist the emergency management director to assess hazards and prepare plans, as well as respond to emergencies and any other duties necessary by the emergency management director. Um, this was proposed by our, um, fire chief, and he proposes a salary range of sixteen dollars an hour to twenty-two dollars an hour.
And that's a separate article?
Yeah, why is it a separate?
Why would this not be?
He presented it as a separate article, so I, I could have kept it separate, but I, I think it needs to be included.
Well, it could be, because it's a new position.
If you include it, what do you do with the explanation? Do you just add the explanation?
Yeah, you could just say, please don't.
Or line item, G G.
Yeah.
And would this, since it is a wage and personnel, um, line, would, would it be the fire chief that proposes this technically, or wouldn't it, wouldn't it be the wage and personnel?
Well, we, it actually, we de-proposed by all, the fire chief, management director, and the wage personnel, um, so that they know where, where the position came from. Unless, if, if Kate has any, if Kate lets us know, otherwise, we'll just, we'll correct that.
All right, sounds good. So do you need us to take, um, a vote on either one of these things? Because it looks like we're, it's already placed in the warrant, so. Um, all right, I will, I guess, entertain a motion to, uh, place Article, well. How would, it's already placed, so how would I, how would we?
To, to, um, to accept the changes in the, um, Section eleven A professional positions, Section eleven B administrative and/or full-time, and then, um, sorry.
So, so how about, um, I'll entertain a motion to accept the changes presented in the Article seven, and have that be reflected in, in updated.
So Sections eleven A to eleven B.
So moved. So moved. Uh, with the addition of the Building Commissioner?
With the addition of the Building Commissioner and the addition of the Emergency Management Support Person.
So we got a motion. One second.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? All right. And then, um, I'll entertain a motion to, um, accept the changes in Article thirteen, line G G, Emergency Emergency Management Support Person, to be merged in with the Article seven? Or they? I'm, I'm struggling with it, because it's two separate articles, so I'm not, and it's not even a proposed article, so I'm not a hundred percent sure how you want us to word a mo, a vote for this.
Um, that, to incorporate the, um, Building Commissioner position and the Emergency Management position, uh, Emergency Management Support Person, um, into the Wage and, in, uh, Classification and Compensation article.
Let's go with that. Sounds legit.
You looking for an article?
Looking for a motion, I guess. All right, you got a motion?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor? All right, all right, five oh. And then, um, are we, are we still gonna skip over two?
Well, I'm just seeing if she's available now, um.
Um, while we're doing that, we can look at approving meeting minutes, January ninth, twenty twenty-four.
Well, what about Annual Reviews? We could look at that.
I'm assuming she's gonna need to talk us through that. I don't want her to buy our attention too much.
Let's see.
Entertain a motion to approve the minute, January ninth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
All right, get a motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, all right, five oh. And then we'll go to, uh, assuming that we're still waiting on, on, on Agenda Item Two, we'll go into Agenda Item Three, Annual Reviews, uh, Department Heads.
So we do have a, um, we do have a form that was, um, created by, um, Ms. McDowell here, um, for, it, it, it's, it's kinda like a, a self-assessment form, again. It provides the Department Heads with different, um, ratings, different categories, similar to the Town Administrator, um, review. It, it's almost fashioned, almost in the same area. So, um, at the next Department Head meeting, I'm going to pass these out to the Department Heads. Um, and I'm going to explain to them about this and ask them to complete one for themselves.
Pardon me.
Um, I'm also going to, I, I have been in touch with our Maya E., um, EPA representative, and we are putting together a, um, training program for Department Heads as well.
I was gonna ask that, okay.
Um, yeah, so we actually are gonna be, um, talking on Thursday, um, about topics and about putting together a training program for them. So that will be, you know, for their assessment, and then for the employee assessment, um, as well. Uh, this is also gonna be, um, a performance evaluation. We will help the Department Heads with this, and we have presented, um, the evaluation to the union, so that they could look at the evaluation. So, um, hopefully, we'll have all of this up and running, um, I would say, within the next two months.
Excellent. Good.
Can I have a question?
Yep.
On page one, it lists five being excellent and one being poor. On page seven, it leads, lists four being outstanding and one being in extremity.
Mm-hmm.
Which is.
Oh, yeah, so we, we, what we're gonna do, we should, we're gonna remove the last page. We're gonna remove that rating scale, because it's, it's, yeah, it's not, um, it's not in line with the first page.
We will be seven, page seven.
Mm-hmm.
That's on page seven, yeah, so we'll, we will delete that.
I would suggest we'll not on that. It's on the TA evaluation also.
Yes, same thing, yes. And, let's see, I don't, I don't see that rating scale on the, well, actually, it does, it is on the employee one, too.
Yeah, it's on all of them.
So we, we'll plan on removing the rating scale on the employee one as well, and then using the same scale that's on, that, that way, we keep it consistent across the board.
Um, so are these, so are all three of these gonna be u, used? So.
So it would, the Department Head Self-Assessment and the Annual Employee Self-Assessment, that will be used. Um, the Performance Evaluation, that just in the form, that could possibly be used, but the union was presented with the Annual Employee Self-Assessment. They were presented with that form, so that, this is the form that we're gonna use, um, because as the union, this is the form that they have seen.
Okay. All righty.
All right, so moving in the right direction on that.
And are we gonna have a policy for when, um, evaluations happen?
We are working on the policy right now. Actually, there's just some tweaks left for the, um, personnel policies. So where these are annual, we will most likely try and work these closer to the end of the fiscal year, um, you know, by maybe June first, the end of the fiscal year. So we, we have a direction come July one.
Right.
Um, if, if, if that's the will of the board.
Um, so do you need us to take a vote on these forms? Because, um, it looks like it's, it's more informational. We still have to wait on the union to accept it and everything as well, right?
So the union, the union has, has, they do have a copy of the employee evaluation form, uh, the Department Heads will get a copy of their form, and actually, we did have a Department Head meeting, um, a few months back, where they were given a copy of this form, so I will give this out to them, and I will ask them to actually fill it out.
Okay. So there's no roadblock, so they can.
As a practice, go ahead and fill it out.
Okay. Uh, so entertain a motion to accept the, the forms as presented?
So moved. Second.
All right, any other discussion?
The only thing I, I just happened to notice here, on the Annual Employee Performance Evaluation, there isn't one, two, three, four, five. It's got the same, um.
Right, we, we, we have to, we have to take, we have to basically add the ratings.
So you're gonna use the one that's the Annual Department Head Self-Assessment, five, four, three, two, one. That's gonna be.
We're going, we're going to move that to the employee.
So whatever he gives the union should have on it. Don't give them any, you know what I mean? Don't give them the wrong information to evaluate.
Right, no, we're, we're gonna give them the same rating scale.
Okay.
All right. They, they will get the same rating scale.
Okay, so should we put in the, the motion, uh, to include the amendments that-
Yes.
That Ed was talking about?
Yes.
So have the motion reflect now. Um, any other further discussion on this? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're good. And then we have, it says Employees, B.
Well, um, Mr. Chair, you will, I, I see that Mary or Katie has joined us from the Collins Center, um, to go over the, uh, classification and compensation.
We covered both.
So we did. Okay. I just wanted to make sure we're good. Okay, so now we'll go back to Classification Compensation Study, presented by the Collins Center. All right.
Hi, Mary, can you hear us? Oh, I think you're muted, Mary.
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
There we go.
Yeah, that's.
Yes, yes.
There we go.
And I, I do believe I, you have the ability to share, um.
All right. So what time did you start your meeting?
So we had some other items to, um, to go, uh, so we were about what? Ten, ten of eight?
Oh, okay, I was gonna say, are you like, you really tired? Because I can just, you know, skip it, no?
Oh, no, our meeting, the, the full meeting started at six o'clock.
Oh, there we go.
Don't touch anything.
No, I'm just trying, I'm just trying. I'm trying to turn it so Mary can see the, the, the board members.
And you, that's a say, I, I don't need to see them, because I just need to see the presentation.
There you go.
So hello, everybody. Nice to see you. Um, Lisa, what's the plan? I'm gonna, like I did earlier today, walk through the presentation and then take questions?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And have these people seen the report?
Yes, we have it.
They have.
Okay, great. So I'm gonna not waste your time, I'm gonna go through my slides, and then I'll take questions at the end. How's that?
Perfect. Thank you.
All righty. Now, if I have set my screen up properly, no, it says I'm not able to screen, share.
All done. Um, let's see. Share screen.
Three dots up in my square.
All right, you should be able to share it now.
There we go.
Okay. How do I do this? You don't, you don't.
All right, let me see if I can get this. There we go. All right. So, uh, welcome, welcome, welcome to your Classification and Compensation Study at eight, whatever, eight twelve on a Tuesday night. You are all very dedicated, so I appreciate your time. Uh, as you know, we were engaged by the, uh, town to do a Classification and Compensation Study. I'm gonna walk you through the process and some of the results. You've seen the report, so that's helpful. I think some of the narrative in the report is more helpful than some of the summary, um, documents. You'll be shocked to know that people wanna jump to the salary recommendations, and what they miss is how important the job description and the classification structure is. So I'll walk through the report and then take any questions you may have. So the project manager is Jennifer Rambaldi. She is not able to be with us tonight. She was at the meeting earlier this morning. Um, I am on the project team, but my role is to also, I am the HR Practice Manager for the, uh, Collins Center. I've got thirty years in municipal government. I have been with the Collins Center fourteen years. Prior to that, I was lucky to be home with my kids for a number of years, and prior to that, I was the HR Director in the town of Watertown. Prior to that, I was in the town of Barnstable. Prior to that, I was in the town of Wellesley, and prior to that, I worked for the Massachusetts, uh, Department of Public Works. So you can date me and age me by the time, uh, because it hasn't been the Mass Department of Public Works since Governor Weld was elected. So if you do the math, I'll be sixty this summer. Um, so, one of the benefits of doing one of these studies, obviously, you all decided it was worth it to take a look at the Classification and Compensation. I, I really, um.
She froze.
I think she froze.
Mary, I think you're frozen.
She needs to walk back in.
She's frozen, yeah.
Mary, you're frozen.
We just meet, reach a percent over there.
Yeah.
All right.
You can't do anything.
I can't do anything.
Yeah. Okay, there we are.
Yep. Now, how's it frozen again? Sign in. Says up there, sign in.
That's, no, that's not.
That's for her. She's on dial-up.
She's got an AOL modem.
Mary, you're, you're frozen again.
We have a good connection?
Yeah.
Anybody know any good show terms?
What should I do? Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay.
Okay, she has to walk back in.
There we go.
All right, so I'm, I'm gonna try again.
All right.
So here's the issue. Can you see me now?
Yeah.
Can you see you, yeah?
Yep, we can see you.
I'm gonna try again. Here's my issue. I am in the town of Marshfield, by the ocean.
Ah, that, yep.
Because we're doing an MMHR training tomorrow in Marshfield for the, uh, supervisory training, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna try again, and we will go through it quickly.
You, you, you may benefit by turning off your camera, then?
That's what I'm thinking of, but will you be able to see my screen if I do that?
Yes.
Yeah, we should.
Okay, I'm gonna turn off my camera.
And now you should be able to share your screen.
There we go. What does that mean? We can't hear?
Okay, can you hear me now, Lisa?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. So that may have worked. So, the benefits of doing a study, you get accurate position descriptions, uh, you can use that for employee evaluation, which I just heard you talking about. It's really important to have, you know, one of the expectations in a job. We wanna make sure pay determinations are objectively made. We wanna make sure that the classifications are fair and equitable, and we want you to comply with laws and regulations like the Mass Pay Equity Law and the Americans with Disabilities Act. So, my favorite slide is to say what a Class and Compensation Study is not. It's not a reclassification or upgrade study. So often, people look at it for the money. We look at it for what is the right structure for the town. It's not a performance evaluation. It's about the job, not about the person. So sometimes people say, well, I do more, I'm better at my job. We don't care how good somebody is at their job, we wanna know what their job description should be, and that's what we're evaluating. It's a staffing level study. Oh, how many hours do we need? How many people do we need? We're evaluating the roles and responsibilities and assigning that to a job description and a classification level. Um, while we did collect some benefit information, this is not a total compensation benefit and benefit study. You know, what you pay in benefits, what the perks are to the jobs, that's not all captured in a salary study. But we do have a good relative, um, outcome. Our methodology. Okay, for the position descriptions, we stress the errors. We did individual interviews. We drafted job descriptions. We, uh, asked for edits and comments by employees and supervisors, and then we finalized position descriptions. The position descriptions are the most important part of the study, so many people think of it as the salary study, but it really is getting the classification and the job descriptions accurate, which is the priority. So when we evaluate the positions, we use a standard point factor system. Uh, we evaluate characteristics like supervision received in exercise, education experience, what are the requirements for the job, how complex are the jobs, who we have contacted with your stakeholders, and really, what is the environment and the physical skill required? All of these have weighted point factors. The system we use is standard across the industry in Massachusetts. You'll find, there's a handful of consultants. We all use the same methodology. We like to think we do it better than others, but really, um, it, it really is a, a uniform system. And then what we do at the end of that is we group it, all the positions, into a classification or grade. So the structure we came up with for your town is that there really are, there's really three grades of Department Heads. We put in the Town Administrator as the fourth to show the relativity, and you'll see that, you know, this, the ones that we recommend in the C level are your, your core, kinda cabinet-level, uh, Department Heads. The B level is your, 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 not your middle managers, but they don't have the scope and scale that the, the C level does, and the A level are a little bit more narrow and focused in their supervision and responsibility. So what we then do is we use that classification to create a market survey. So we were able to, um, distribute a survey to area municipalities. Sometimes people think that we wanna make sure that we match our, our community, we want the same population, we want the same budget, we want the same, whatever it is, widgets that we produce. So what we then do is we use that classification to create a market survey. So we were able to distribute a survey to area municipalities. Sometimes people think that we want to make sure that we match our, our community. We want the same population. We want the same budget. We want the same, whatever it is, widgets that we produce. The reality is, a market survey is where is your labor market? Who do you lose people to? Who can you attract people to come work for you? So it really is a regional and a geographic analysis. It's not if we were doing an operations study, like you would do for public works and say, how many road miles? How many pieces of equipment do you have? This is really about where do you pull employees from? How far will they drive to come to work for you? What is the labor market? What we do is we convert everything to hourly wages. Most of your positions in this grouping work thirty-five hours a week, so we use that as the standard. But we convert it to an hourly wage, so our comparisons are accurate. For example, your salary, annual salary for thirty-five hours a week is different than somebody making the same wage, somebody working forty hours a week. By comparing it, by converting it to an hourly rate, we can, we are able to compare apples to apples. We evaluate both the average and the median, so that we can see how the integrity of the data is. If the, the average and the median are different, we know that there's some sort of outlier. So we want to make sure that we evaluate those data points. There's a chart within the report that refers to why things could be an outlier. It has to deal with what is the title comparison? And how many data points do we have? Is the position elected or appointed? Do they have, wear more than one hat in their job? All of those things impact the analysis of the data. And the analysis of the data, it starts out as math and science, but at some point, it becomes the art of knowing what the culture and the climate is within the town. What we do to evaluate the minimum and maximum of the recommended rates of a range, we tend to highlight the maximum of the range, because many municipalities have pay ranges that they're not using. And they tend to have most of their employees at the maximum. So unless they've updated their system recently, we find that the maximum is the more accurate number to use. So what we do is we look at the salary data and use the survey data for the maximum pay to then create the pay range. So we take the recommended maximum and subtract thirty percent of that to make it a thirty percent range. So that's how we coalesce all the data, the current rates, what the survey shows, and what the groupings are to create the recommended pay range. We've recommended a pay range. The town can decide whether it wants to stay with ranges, move to steps, move to quadrants. You may want to implement a performance merit system of some sort. So it depends on what you're looking to create moving forward, what type of system you want to adopt. If you're going to use for department heads only, we recommend a range system, not a step system. But you have some unionized department heads. So you may end up bargaining over a step system or a quadrant with a midpoint kind of system. That's totally up to you. But you have the parameters of the recommended ranges, which are based on your current structure and the salary data from the survey. The labor market survey, these are the municipalities who responded to the survey. Abington, you was in the report. Abington, Duxbury, East Bridgewater, Marshfield, Norwell, Pembroke, Clinton, Rockland, and West Bridgewater, which is a pretty good validation of survey. When you see this many municipalities, you'll see that the data equalizes itself and we have a really good sample of the data. You can see here, these are your, what I want to highlight for you is your existing pay ranges. You really don't have pay ranges. I don't fully understand the history of how we got here to these minimums and maximums. And are they real or are they just representative of what has happened in the past? But ranges of, you know, one, two, four, five percent are not truly ranges. So clearly, these are either individual rates that have been adjusted since the person started, and it might be all over the map. But most in the industry, pay ranges run from twenty percent, twenty-five percent, thirty percent. Sometimes we see forty percent, but more than that really makes it difficult to hire at the beginning. So you really don't have a compensation system. I think you have a decent grouping of positions, you know, based on the similar pay that are the maximums. You can see by the, your town's maximums, you've got some groupings in there, the high thirties, the high forties, the low forties, but with no rhyme or reason to it. So it's clearly been about who has been the individual in the job. And that's why you hired us, so that we could come up with a system for you. But this is to highlight, when you look at the data, why it's so skewed, because you really don't have a system. So when you look at the survey minimum, you can see that your minimum in the market... So if you see this column here, Hanson Minimum, that's what you currently call your minimum for people. And then you see the survey average minimum and median minimum. And you can see that in many cases, there's a handful, in many cases, your town pays above what the market does for the minimum. And that's okay. It doesn't mean your people are overpaid in any way, shape, or form. It means that your minimum is above the minimum of the market. So that indicates, you might be able to recruit people in for most of these positions, but whether you can keep them or not is at question. So you do have a few positions. You see the red font. Those are the positions that are your current minimum. And again, it's your current minimum, not what you're actually being paid. Your current minimum is below the market. That's an indicator that your pay scale starts too low. Now, we don't have in here what the incumbents actually make. Most of them make more than your minimum. So that means they may in fact be within the pay range. So don't look at this as saying, oh, your veterans officer is underpaid by blank dollars. It just shows that the minimum of your range. Now, if your veterans officer makes nineteen dollars and seventy-five cents an hour, that person is underpaid by that thirteen dollars. But my suspicion is, your veterans officer makes between the nineteen seventy-five and the thirty-three seventeen. And the thirty-three seventeen, you know, if they make in that, it's within the market. So that's a key thing to look at. Just because you see the red font doesn't mean the person is underpaid. It's your range is off. So then, when you see the maximum survey, you can see a different picture. You can see all the red font. That means that your market, your maximum is well below the market average and median. So what this tells us is, you may start people, oh, no.
That's a good part.
That's a good part.
The cliffhanger.
That's, that's well below the forty-three to forty-one dollars. Lisa, can you still hear me?
We can now. We lost you for a little bit, but you're back now.
Okay, I'm back, because I got a little notice saying my internet was up.
Gone again.
Same notice you just got.
Yep.
Looks like we have to raise some stuff. I'm confused about these ranges.
Well, we have to raise it if we want to recruit.
Yep. If you want to keep. This to me tells me where to keep them. This is the retention.
We want to keep them, exactly.
Yeah. The first one was a recruitment. This one's a retention.
And I know there's the longevity things that are...
These are the, these are the, it's a study that they did. That not reflecting.
But where are they getting their ranges?
I can find it. She's making them.
What's that?
But she says our ranges are too tight.
So they got, they got pay data when they tried, they did it for all of our departments. And then what they did was they put everything together based on, and also looking at those other departments.
Yes. I'm just looking at why she's saying that ours is so tight.
Okay, I'm back.
You understand me? I'll, I'll, I'll...
All right.
If there's another tip.
Lisa, can you hear me?
We can hear you, yeah.
You're all set.
All right. There we go. Can you kind of start this a little bit over? Because we kind of missed you a little bit. Because you went in and out.
Just this sheet.
Just this sheet.
So what this sheet is showing, how your ranges are out of whack with the market. So on the previous sheet, it showed that your minimum pay was kind of okay. But because you have, when you go back to those percentages that I showed you of two percent, four percent, the market is a thirty percent range, a twenty percent range. So you may be to recruit people, but you're not competitive with the market because your maximum pay is way underneath. So when you look at the veterans agent, your range, for some wacky reason, is nineteen dollars and seventy-five cents to thirty-five ninety. You can see that the thirty-five ninety is well under the, you know, the, um, the market of forty-three dollars, you know? So you can see that, um, you're well below on the maximum. So that's the issue. So when you look at, this is what we have recommended for pay ranges. And that takes into account what you currently pay, what you should be paying in terms of what is the labor market. So we've showed this in the hourly rate and in the annual rate, based on thirty-five hours a week. So we are recommending, in most cases, your employees fall within the range we're recommending. There's a few that are outside of the range, but that means that they've been underpaid for a while. So you'll have to do that analysis of what does that look like? Then on implementation, you'll need to make decisions on how to implement. Are you placing them within the range with an increase? Are you moving, how are you going to move them through the range? Are you adjusting the compensation schedule for the market and cost of living? We recommend that every other year or so, you actually do apply a cost of living or a market adjustment, so that you don't fall behind. But you'll see that we've created pay ranges for you, so you have future growth for people. And that can be based on their performance evaluation. So, or it can be a step system based on annual, just longevity. You could tie it to merit. You could tie it to an evaluation. Those are the policy decisions you're gonna have to make. So each one of the slides I showed you is in the report. So what I can do now is answer questions, or you could digest, and then send me questions through Lisa. It's really up to you.
This is a lot to unpack.
Yeah. It's a lot for a day.
Yeah. So, um, for you, Mr. Chair. So I'm wondering, what are our next steps, if any? What are we going to do with this information?
So typically, what boards and committees do is they accept the report, you know? I don't know that you need a vote to accept the report. And then you kind of digest it, analyze it, and whatever your process is to adopt or recommend it to whomever you would be making recommendations to. You know?
Tell me.
We recommend that you implement a new system for July one. A lot of that goes to, how are you gonna fund it? What does it look like for COGS? You're gonna have to do that analysis of, if we create these ranges, what we recommend is, for example, say you're gonna implement for July one of twenty twenty-four, for example. We recommend that you say, okay, for July one of twenty twenty-four, we were gonna give everybody a two percent increase anyways. So what we say is, apply your two percent increase to everybody's current pay and place them in the recommended ranges. For those people who current pay falls into the range, it's only gonna cost you that two percent. For those who have been historically under the market, and I don't know how many people there are, they would get brought up to, if you apply the two percent, they would get brought up to the minimum, which might be a bigger cost for you. So it's really about running the scenarios of what would it cost to implement these new ranges. Then you've got to decide, how are we gonna move people through the ranges each year? I heard you just talking about performance appraisal. Was that going to be tied to pay? Do they have to meet a certain standard to move up within the range by two percent or three percent? Like in many union contracts, they get a percentage step plus a cost of living. It's up to you to decide what system you want. And you don't need to decide by, you know, across the board. There may be other benefits with union employees that you want to treat differently. So it really is time now to run some analysis based on what your policy decisions would be. We're happy to, you know, help, help you do that when you come up with ideas of what you're looking for. We don't know if you want steps, whether you want ranges or quadrants with midpoints and maximums. There's all different policies for you to consider. It really does depend on how you want to approach it.
All right. Well, thank you very, very much. You gave us a lot to consider. This is great.
I am so sorry that I'm going in and out. You know, I wish I was out on the ocean in Marshfield, but I'm just with bad Wi-Fi, so I apologize.
No, this is fantastic. You really gave us a lot to think about. So we really do appreciate you taking the time and walking us through this.
All right. We'll reach back out with any follow-up, because it takes a while to digest all the information.
Yeah. Yeah, no, thank you. Thank you.
All right.
We'll try to filter all of our questions and everything through Lisa, and then maybe if we have to circle back to you, we'll, we'll call you.
Happy to do it. All right. Take care. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Take care. Have a great night.
All right. Bye-bye.
All right. So we have a lot to think about. And I don't know about you all, but I'm getting to that point where my brain's a little fried. So, does anybody have any last minute questions before I ask to adjourn? We've cut, went through everything.
I don't, I don't have any question. I mean, at the risk of stating the obvious, I don't think adjusting people's salaries at this point in our trajectory is something we can take on for the July first, which is what she had recommended. But, but we could talk about it at a different meeting.
Yeah. I think when we're, when it's a little bit clearer and fresher, yeah, we can actually attack this in a much more level-headed way. Any, any other last minute things? I don't want to stop anybody from having something to say. Nope. All right. So with that, we've gone through everything. So I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved to, so moved.
Is second?
Second.
All right. All those are paper? All right.
And we're going to enter executive session. I will enter a motion to enter executive session pursuant to open meeting law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, building litigation discussions, executive session pursuant to open meeting law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, eighty-two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, highway director, executive session pursuant to open meeting law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect... We're still in open session. I'm reading our executive session. So, all right. I just probably lost my place. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, union negotiations with highway, administrative, police, fire, and last but not least, executive session pursuant to open meeting law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, eighty-seven, to review and approve executive session minutes, March twelfth, twenty twenty-four. We will not be, I'm entertaining a motion to enter executive session. We will not be exiting executive session and going back into open session.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Aye.
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 Okay. Thank you very much.